Please join me in a brief moment of silence. Thank you. We move on to item five, pledge allegiance. Could everyone please join me in the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next item six, determination of presidential forum. We have a forum. Next we move on to item seven, proclamations and recognitions. I'd like to open up with our positive Petersburg moment for today. And today I would like to recognize and congratulate our former Virginia State University Dean of the College of Agriculture, Dr. Jill Harrison Brono. Dr. Brono has been nominated to serve as the new Deputy Secretary of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, USDA by President-elect Joe Biden. Dr. Brono is one of five women nominated by the Biden administration to serve in the number two spot as Deputy Secretary at key cabinet agencies. The United States Deputy Secretary of Agriculture is the second highest ranking official in the USDA and runs the day-to-day operations of the almost 100,000 employee department. So we're so proud of our Petersburg native, Dr. Jill Harrison Brono. Next we move on to item eight, reports and responses to previous public information period. Ms. Kimmy.
Good morning. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I have no responses from the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you. We move on to item nine, communications special reports. A city manager's report, Ms. Teresa Faro Benavides.
Mayor and council, you should have received a copy of my report. I'd like to highlight today, our new interim fire chief, Mr. Scott Leaboll, started today. He was sworn in this morning as our interim fire chief. He is going to be working closely with staff over the next few months to not only make sure that we look operational at the organization, but also to help us in recruitment of our permanent fire chief. Several projects he'll be focusing on in his interim assignment. One is to address some of our challenges with EMS, also focusing on some staff promotional policies and policy updates within the organization. Included in my report, you'll notice that it says, "We are in the process of completing the move to our new banking organization." And so this has been led by our finance director. And Ms. Elliott has been working closely to not only close down accounts, but establishing new accounts for both the city of Petersburg as well as for the public schools. Part of this will also include additional training as we've moved from our actual, our previous bank to the new bank. Hopefully this will also create some additional opportunities along the way for the city as we start to look at online bill pay and other areas along that way. Lockbox development and testing progress. It also talks about other opportunities that we can see that can help to streamline this process of paying bills as well as collecting. Second area, just from an update standpoint in public works, parking rights structure is still underway. We have, as you've noticed, we've completed demolition and this is a reimbursable, 100% covered by state fund project. An invitation was bid for bids were advertised on the 23rd, pre-bid conference on January 7th, and bids will be open on the 26th for the construction phase of this project. Another exciting project my team has been working on is the LED conversion. Dominican Dominion. Dominion has been working and providing with numbers of all the light poles and working with us on this project. The project is anticipated to take at least one year with 50 light conversions per phase in the conversion. This is going to help creating a better sense of lighting within our community and we're excited about that. Sunside Depot has been a project that started from my coming onboard and we've been looking at completion. As you will recall, that this was initially scheduled to be the new site for the Department of Interior and our headquarters for tourism there. Once we started this project that stopped during the financial transition we had, we have gone back and found that once you stop a project, it's a little bit more difficult to do. So we have been working on some remediation efforts with our architect to provide bid and construction documents so that we can complete this project. We also are going to continue working with the Department of Interior to see if we can figure out a way of making sure this is the center point. Currently, there are some funding challenges we have, but we're looking for alternatives for funding to support the completion of this project. The beautiful, the building is absolutely gorgeous. However, once you start construction and stop in the middle, there is some remediation and other works. We are hoping to meet with Mr. Louis Rogers either this week or next week to have some further discussions on their potential relocation there. St. Andrews Bridge, another project that we have continued working on. We had a little bit of a delay. It was supposed to begin in December 22nd due to the holiday season and some supply issues. We were a little bit behind on that. The contract anticipates being physically onsite by the end of January to start and work on this project. Last and certainly not least, litter has always been an issue and I'm going back, proud of me coming. We've talked about this, Ms. Tyus and the Grounds, Streets and Grounds Department. They're working on the litter campaign to just talk about keep Petersburg clean and reminding people that it is our responsibility to take care of our city and to ensure the cleanliness of the city. This concludes my report, just as a follow-up, and I think we'll have more when we talk about COVID on immunizations and things like that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Benavides. Any questions? Councilman Hill?
Yes, Madam City Manager, thank you for your report. The lighting, the LED lighting, is it any way that we can get a map of how they're going to be with neighborhoods and they're going to be doing first and how that procedure will be implemented?
I will work on that. One of the great things that our city assessor has been working on is a GIS project for our city. And so if we could work and I'll talk to him about tying those together with Mr. Harris and seeing if we can show where it's going to happen over the face approach so that everyone will have a clue, but yes.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Wilson Smith?
Oh, you could see me. I can't see me. But anyway, thank you. I had to have the question about the lighting. If, can you at least tell us at this point about the 50 polls, something about what ward they're in? Are they main streets? Anything you can tell us about that?
I don't know personally with the 50 polls that they're going to do a year. But if you would, oh, there's Tandula. She's there. She can speak to me. Ms. Ennis, you can unmute.
Garrett, can you unmute Tandula?
Hi. I will provide a listing of the streets and the maps of where the 50, the first 50 polls will will be installed then. I apologize about that. I should have put it with the city manager's report. But I can make sure I have that to y'all by, within the next two days, if that's good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
The next question I had for you is, have we heard anything back from the CGBD money since the last correspondence in December?
Mr. Tabor, are you on the line? Let me see if I see him on here. Do you see him? I'm looking to see if Mr. Tabor is on the line. I know he's been in communications.
I don't see him unless he's in some other name.
Okay. So I do remember an email, but if you would, uh-oh. Okay. If you would allow me the opportunity to get from Mr. Tabor an update and then I will send it out to council, but I will also ask Ms. Kimmy to put something online to give the update. I know that he has been in communication with the individuals from CDBG, but I'm not sure of the actual last response we received.
Okay, I had sent an email to Mr. Lyons. I think he forwarded it to Ms. Tyus, but did we get any responses to the RFP for the mural? The mural at the park?
Ms. Tyus is on the line. Ms. Tyus, who's in charge of that, I think she was working with it. Ms. Tyus, can we unmute, ask you to respond to that? And she is on the phone. Planning is raising their hand also to respond to the other. They have to unmute themselves. Planning?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Garrett, good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Auditorium Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. We are awaiting approval from HUD regarding the consolidated plan that was resubmitted per their comments. And once they provide that approval, we will certainly inform council and the sub recipients who are scheduled to receive the funding. In fact, we are sending correspondence today to each of the, to each of these sub recipients, informing them of the status of the funding.
So when did we resubmit the plan?
It was the first week of January.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Garrett, at this time, can you show video for Bernice McCormick and Ms. Rose Salin? They are the
Interpreters.
Interpreters.
Yes, hi, this is Bernice McCormick. If you could please make me and Rose Salin co-host, then we can handle all spotlighting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who is the other one?
Rose Salin.
So can I continue, Mayor?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Can we please, at the next council meeting of February the 2nd, have Dr. Hart or members from the Health Department to come into the meeting and report to us on COVID and what's rationed now for things, for our numbers going up and what strategies they have in place for our numbers to go down? Please.
Right, Councilwoman Wilson Smith, I'm totally with you. I contacted Dr. Hart this morning. I'm waiting to hear back from him. Because I had those same questions.
Okay.
Dr. Hart has asked for a meeting with the city managers, an emergency meeting tomorrow, and we'll also highlight that then because he does want to have a conversation with us about what's going on. So we'll also follow up with him there too.
Thank you. And have we advertised for Economic Development Director yet?
Not that I'm
No, we have not, but Madam, this is Lionel. We have not. We're working with our HR director to start that process here.
Okay. I'm sorry, I have so many questions, but when do we expect the capital report?
I'm sorry. Okay, we got to figure this out. What's happening is I'm losing, I know it's spotlighting her, but I can't see the council members who are speaking and their hands won't show. So we're going to have to just have you list it as a sub picture?
You can click View at the top right-hand corner, and then if you select Gallery View, you can see all of the participants, not just me.
Okay, and every time you press Spotlight, it takes them out and it puts only you in.
So you just have to click Gallery?
Okay, but every time I do that and you click on Spotlight, it takes it out of Gallery for everyone?
Correct.
Okay, so let's keep Gallery. Okay.
So just you'll, you'll have to keep clicking Gallery. Thank you.
Okay.
So you want me to ask my question again?
CAFER update, India. We are waiting, I think we've had Ms. India Adams? I think she's behind me. We are in the final phases of questions and answers. My goal for us is to have our CAFER presentation no later than the second meeting in February. I just need to follow up with Ms. Adams on where we are with that process. We've turned everything over to the auditors. Waiting for additional. Here's Ms. Adams.
Yes, sorry, I was trying to get off mute. Yes, you're correct. We have been working with our auditors, following up on some last items that they've been testing. Our last communication with them was February 2nd, was going to be slated for the CAFER presentation. And that's where we are today.
Okay, may I ask or state that it is imperative that we have this CAFER report before our current city manager needs?
Yes, I've expressed that to our audit team at this time. We are again in the last phases of some of that testing and some of the items. Due to COVID, there was some delays on their team and their part, but we are definitely working to wrap those up daily. We've had great coordination with our teams between the Treasurer's Office as well as our internal teams at DSS and our other departments. So we are working on the last phases of that now.
Okay, I see Ms. Tyus is now on the line. So if you could answer the question, please, did we get any responses to the RFP for the mural at the park? And where are we on that issue?
Yes, ma'am. Because it was such a small item, procurement suggested that we use a process called Fax Back, where you fax a request to artists and people who might be interested. So folk like VSU's Art Department and others were on the Fax Back. We completed that process. We did get a response. The response was from Mr. Underwood. We have moved forward with that process of procuring Mr. Underwood's services to complete the mural.
Okay. And given that, I would like to reiterate once more. I did go back through our minutes to find out when we did discuss this and approve it. It is not within our minutes. Again, it is not within our minutes. We did not have a public comment period on spending money for such a mural. I'm saying this for the record. It is not within our minutes. We did not do due diligence for this, this project. Another question I wanted to ask, I guess this goes to Ms. Benavides, is I'm concerned about something I'm reading in reference to a Ms. Dunkin' Tell. Can you give me information about her? Is she employed by the city?
Yes. Ms. Dunkin' Tell, yes, she's employed by the city. Ms. Dunkin' Tell came to us from the city of Hopewell, where she was serving as the Deputy Treasurer. She was hired by the city of Petersburg as the Assistant Billing and Collection Manager. I'm not sure if it's been a year ago, but during that time, she served in the role. Ultimately, she was moved to work with the Deputy City Manager, Managing Director of Public Safety. She is working. She does work. She's actually assisting HR with an audit currently of the Fire Department's staff and their position codes. And so that's what she's been doing. But she is under the Police Department and she has been working on all things public safety from an administrative function.
Okay. Thank you. I thought I had one more question, but I can't find it. So, okay, thank you.
Councilman Carter?
Let me go back or follow up on the LED topic. I think a couple of members of council have commented on that, and I think it's important to all of us. The statement was made that we were going to do only 50 a year. I think the city manager's memo says the project is anticipated to take at least one year with 50 light conversions per phase. So it's not, I think, I hope it's not 50 a year. I hope it's, I hope it's going to be completed in a year. How many altogether? Altogether, how many lights are we converting to LED?
Mr. Lyons or Ms.?
It's, I don't know the exact number. I'll give you all the latest updated report that I sent out. But I can't remember the exact number right now and I don't want to just guess at that.
Wait, hi, and we're converting Can you hear me? I apologize.
Yes, you can.
I'm sorry. We're converting approximately 500 lights. And you are correct, it is 50 per phase.
All right, so we go have 10, the target is to have 10 phases in one year. Is that the case?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, great. Now, are there, has there been any consideration to adding any LEDs? And I sure don't want to slow the train down, but maybe now's the, now's the time to think about whether we've got enough light coverage, LED or otherwise. For example, parking lots in downtown. Is there an opportunity to add light poles during this LED conversion? Or is that to be done at some later time?
The additional, the adding of the light poles is not part of this project. That is something that we will have to phase in at another time. This is just to replace the poles that we currently have in place right now. And then we'll determine what funding we have available to expand to additional lighting.
All right. I think I have heard in my first term on council, maybe a couple of years ago, something about a light study being done on the parking lots, the city's parking lots. Do you know whether that ever moved forward, Ms. Ennis?
I would, I would have to check my, check my records to see if we ever conducted the light study, but I do not recall offhand that we did.
Well, Ms. Faro Benavides, when we have our next business session, well, sorry, our next work session.
Yes.
Would you, would you ask staff to bring council up to date as to whether a light study has been initiated, whether a light study is needed, and what is the cost of doing one? And what would be the timetable for completing one? If you could address, have staff address all of those issues, I think that might help us move forward. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of council? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Benavides, for the report. Next we move on to item 9B, COVID-19 update. Ms. Tyus?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. In your, in, this, good afternoon. I'll give Garrett a chance to, to put up the latest District ESF 8 report. And I'll talk from it while he, while he gets it. So the report that you customarily get from us shows that the Petersburg death toll since last we spoke has gone up by one. I think it was 36 and now we're at 37. But even more important than that particular number is for us to pay attention to the number of actual cases that Petersburg has had versus the number of cases that have actually cleared. We have had a total of 1,551 active cases in Petersburg. As of the, as of the 18th of January, we now have, we've cleared 1,236 of those cases, leaving us with 178 active cases. And noting that that active case number is, has been much higher because at the last report, we were just getting the information and the data from the Thanksgiving and some of the Christmas holidays, which, which left out our active number higher. So we have a higher active number than we, than we customarily are accustomed to. If you remember, that number has been trending like 100 or less for, for several weeks. But the escalation is that the state has caught up on putting in all of the data that has come in, that was, that was lagging behind during the holidays. So the number of, of active cases that we have in Petersburg now stands at 278. The other important information that I need to share with you is that, is to remind you that testing is constantly going on in the city of Petersburg. We're not having a challenge with getting people tested who have a desire to be tested. There are no, we'll let you know as walk-ups are happening, but we're still scheduling through the Department of Health. So anybody who desires to get a test for COVID in Petersburg is not a difficult initiative. So the next testing that's going to happen in Petersburg is going to be on January 21st from 1 to 3. I won't say, I won't say the site because you still need to call the Department of Health and make a reservation, which is how we've been managing it and not having people wait extended periods of time because we're paying attention and being serious about schedules. The, the other information that I want to share with you is that we have started, we have started vaccinations all across the Crater District. The Crater District for Petersburg, testing is done and it has to be, it has to be scheduled. So you can't just walk up. So I'll, I'll, again, not share where, where it's happening. But, but we are in Phase 1A. And, and, and everybody's being allowed to, to, to be flexible because the goal here, and as the governor stated in his address a couple of days ago, the goal is to do the best job we can of getting as many vaccinations as possible. As a, as a community appeal, we, we, the challenge of getting minorities to participate in the vaccination is real. It is absolutely real. So we're going to, we're asking everybody in the community to spread the word and to be encouraging to our residents that taking the vaccine is a good thing to do. The quicker we get those in, in as many residents as possible, the more likely our chances of getting the whole COVID initiative under control. So for, for those of you who are, who already been assisting us in this effort, we thank you and encourage everybody else. The goal here should be to, to applaud those who have chosen to participate, encourage and encourage others to participate in this initiative. The other addition that, that we want to note as a result of COVID, we, we have, we have now gotten our responses from the state in terms of the number of participants that the city of Petersburg has, increasing in terms of our social services numbers. So a while back, we had almost gotten down to maybe 16,000 participants, unduplicated participants in our social services benefits. And now we're now at about a little over 20,000 participants in, in social services. So COVID has had an impact. I guess the beauty is, is that we're, we're still able to provide services. But as a result of COVID, our, the number of folk who are benefiting from our social services benefits is, is now escalating in accordance with what's happening to the residents of our city. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Mayor? Okay. Councilman Hill?
Yes, two questions. And then this may be directed to our city manager. We have, it's been brought to council's attention from, by one department. I will not name that department where individuals are still coming to work that are, that maybe have tested positive for COVID, but they're still coming to work. And what is our policy or our procedure? I know we, we need to quarantine, I know 14 days or something to that, that magnitude. So I don't want to name the department. We can talk offline, just you and I, but that one of the departments, that individuals are still coming to work that are testing positive for COVID. So are you, you know what I'm talking about?
Well, Councilman Hill, this is Kim Robinson, your HR director. And other
And other, um, mayor and other members of council. Um, I am not aware of individuals who are coming into work positive. If employees test positive, they are to stay home and quarantine based on their doctor's advice. That's what all of, any employee who tests positive in the city of Petersburg should be doing. Quarantining until their next test with their physician.
Okay, thank you. All right, another question, uh, Ms. Tyus, I've been getting, uh, some phone calls and you may have covered this and then me, me gotten past me, uh, where some of, of the senior individuals have been calling Department of, uh, Health Department trying to get the shot and they haven't been able to get through of anything. I guess that, that would take part when we talk to Dr. Hart. I don't know if you have any, uh, information on that, you know, uh, because they're trying to get their shots.
Okay, so, so we're, the city of, uh, the Crater District, and Dr. Hart can share more with you. The Crater District is, is, is now updating and figuring out when it gets to, uh, solidly to Phase One B, which is where the seniors will be covered. So we're, I'm not sure when you all's call with Dr. Hart is, but we're updating on Thursday in terms of where we are with that process. And then we'll do a, 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 a big community communication as to when that is. So I'm sure everybody's getting calls. Um, but we'll, we'll be able to, to use the, um, uh, we have a, a marketing committee for the Crater District. And so as soon as we get to that point, and we expect it to happen relatively soon, uh, can't say when, uh, but, but we're updating every Thursday, uh, so that we understand the minute, uh, that's out as well as the process. So, so we don't want to, to have our seniors trying to get to someplace. We have to be able to be very clear about what the process is so that they're going straight at it when, when we're able to do it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, uh.
Okay.
Mayor?
All right, Councilman, yes.
Um, I would like to ask Ms. Tyus a question.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Hey, Ms. Tyus, um, on the average, how many, um, citizens in the city of Petersburg is getting tested for COVID? Do you, do you know?
Um, no, that's a good question. I will, I will get that for you.
Okay.
We're testing out of the window. I'll get that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Wilson Smith?
Thank you. Um, when people, when employees in the city are tested, whether their results are negative or positive, do they present something to HR indicating this? How does HR keep up with who's tested and what the results are?
So, uh, Kim, do you wanna do it or?
Kim's not, Kim win the other one, but you can go ahead and tell her what happened.
So, so what happens is we have a direct connect to the Health Department, uh, the state and the local Health Department. Early on in this process, what we realized is that we were responding to rumors, uh, uh, and so it, it got to be very, very confusing. So there's a direct, when, when any point of contact, uh, uh, e- either the, the Health Department or, or any of the hospitals around, the, the, uh, medical facilities have folk who test positive, they are, uh, they are communicating directly with the Health Department and then the Health Department is communicating with us. If a, if a, 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 a employee of the city comes, uh, is positive, they present to us a note from their doctors. But those things meet, so we'll get it from the, the, uh, uh, staff person as well as a notification from the Health Department. We are, our COVID team, which is, uh, internally headed by HR, uh, manages each and every one of those cases. So the, the, the staff person is told and the, the regulations change every day. So the last time we talked about it, it might have been fourteen days and two negative, uh, tests after. The regulations have now changed that the, um, um, the, the time that you have to go into yourself is now ten days. Uh, and the regulations are changing on whether or not you have to have two negative, um, uh, tests in a row because they now have found that it can, it can linger in your system for a matter of, of time afterwards. So the, the regulations are changing every day. We are totally tied to the Health Department in terms of how we manage that information. And we're getting direct information from the Health Department and health providers who are, are doing that. And then the, and then employees are sending us confirmation when they, uh, when they retest or when it's time for them to come back to work. If anybody has any specific concerns, uh, uh, you, you, uh, just, just call them to us and we now learned how to manage it so that it's not running after rumors. We, we're, we're tied to the system that allows us to officially, um, address each case as it happens.
Ms. Tyus, to tie into this, one of the conversations that's important is when we, uh, council actually adapted a regulation that stated, uh, what the process and the procedures are. One of the things that she pointed out and that as time goes by and as they learn more, is initially it was fourteen days. Now it is seven days. Some require retesting, some don't require retesting. However, the active you are contagious has been identified to be under a seven-day stretch. And so that's why you may have people returning to work after that time, uh, based on their doctor saying you are clear. So we are, uh, constantly updating and checking in. We also did conduct training for staff to tell them what to do when you think you, uh, in which we've always said, if you do not feel well, please go. The one thing that we don't have an opportunity to do is, we do testing with the Health Department, but private individuals have a right to go to private physicians and do testing. That is not because they were tested, something that will come to us. If it's something that is a positive test, then it gets to the Health Department. But just general testing does not necessarily come back to the city when it's done via other alternatives.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Tyus, for your report.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next we move on to item ten, consent agenda to include minutes of previous meetings. A, meetings of closed session meeting of January fourth, two thousand twenty-one, closed session of January fifth, two thousand twenty-one, organizational city council meeting of January fifth, two thousand twenty-one, January fifth, two thousand twenty-one special regular city council meeting. Item ten B, to have a public hearing to incorporate a fee schedule within the appendix of the city's code of ordinances and amend the fees for the building permit fees. Those are items for the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve, Councilman Hill.
I move that we approved, uh, the consent agenda.
Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Smithley?
A second.
Okay, second. Madam Clark, would you please call the row?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers? Yeah, okay. Councilmember Hart?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smithley?
Aye.
Mayor Perrin?
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Next we move on to item eleven A, a public hearing to receive public comments on amendments to the FY twenty twenty-one general fund budget. Mr. Floyd?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Um, Garrett, do you have the presentation that I said? Okay, um, good afternoon again. This is, um, as we started the budget process for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, um, obviously the pandemic was just, was just hitting the United States as well as Virginia and Petersburg, um, and, and pretty much everywhere, obviously. But, um, so when we were putting the budget together, we, we had to go back to the drawing board and figure out what we thought was going to happen from a revenue standpoint, because we were not entirely sure how the, um, the economy would react to this pandemic. And, um, one thing that city manager and, um, kind of pressed over and over during the process of the, um, adoption process of the budget itself, is we would look at the revenues and expenditures throughout the fiscal year. And depending on how those numbers were shaping up, approximately about halfway through the year, if, if things were looking good and or bad, depending on the situation, we would bring form, bring forward an amendment to city council. And that's what we're doing today. So go ahead and go to the next slide here. Um, go to the next one, please. So, um, I don't know if everyone remembers the budget goals that we presented at, at the onset of this, um, development process, but, um, we just kinda, kinda spoke to it briefly, but, um, we, we did the three Bs. Bracing for the, um, bracing the organization for the likely economic downturn, which resulted in significant revenue decreases in this adopted budget. And obviously, we're balancing the continuity of operations with reduced resources due to that economic downturn and that resulted in, um, not only the revenues, um, coming in are being budgeted lower, but also the expenditures to keep the budget balanced. And then obviously, we, we're committed to building the fund balance by a minimum of one million dollars annually. So this budget amendment process, what, what we were able to do, we analyzed every revenue source, every expenditure line item for every department, um, as well as looking at the variances from the, the budget to what was actually coming to fruition throughout the fiscal year. And then we also analyzed trends because as we've spoken about multiple times during the, the presentations for the budget report, that a lot of our expenditures are cyclical, um, that they come in at set times of the year, whether at the beginning of the year, halfway through the year, at the end of the year. Very rarely, for the most part, do they come in equally across the board. So we had to look at those trends across, across the entire, um, general fund to ensure that we're capturing everything the, the proper way. Um, this, this budget amendment is again, once again, structurally balanced, um, correct significant errors and omissions that, that may have, may have been present at the time, um, of adoption. Um, and again, it, it, it reflects recent trends and new information that we do have, which we will get to on both the revenue and expenditure side. And it's based on six months of actual results. And, um, I say it again and again, we're also very conservative as it relates to our revenues and, um, and our expenditures. So previously adopted was seventy-three point three million dollars. Um, we're recommended for the amendment seventy-four point five million dollars, which is about a one point two million dollar increase, little less than two percent. So I'll, I'll go over the revenues first, um, by category, and then subsequent slides will actually break them down, um, more in detail based on the, the revenue source that falls under each category. So our, um, general property tax was budgeted thirty-two point six, we're amending thirty-four point one. Um, other local taxes, which is an increase of about one point five million dollars. Other local taxes were budgeted thirteen point five approximately, and it's, we're amending thirteen point six. About a hundred and six thousand dollar increase. Permits and fees budgeted three hundred and sixty-three thousand, um, with a slight increase from about fourteen thousand to three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Fines and forfeitures were budgeted eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Um, this is where we're seeing a significant decrease, um, down to five hundred and ninety-three thousand. And we'll touch more again on those individually when we get to those particular categories. And then revenue from use of money and property, about a twenty-three thousand dollar decrease from one twenty-two, a hundred and twenty-two thousand to nine hundred and, or ninety-nine thousand, sorry. Um, charges for service were roughly about the same, three point zero one up to about three point zero three, about seventeen thousand increase. Miscellaneous revenue decreased from one point one million to about one point oh seven million. Uh, recovered costs, there's actually saw an increase of about seventy-seven thousand dollars, up from eighty point five to a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Revenue from the Commonwealth and revenue from the, uh, federal government are roughly about the same, and the numbers are, are large numbers. So those decreases and increases accordingly are not that significant. Um, um, decrease in the Commonwealth by about thirteen thousand and an increase from the federal government about ninety-nine thousand. Um, the non-ever new receipts, um, was budgeted two hundred and thirty-three thousand. We've zeroed that out. So that obviously is a full decrease of two hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred. Go ahead here. So these are the major, um, major revenue pieces that we wanted to highlight, um, public service corporation tax, um, that's showing the one point five million dollar increase. If you remember the previous slide that stated that general property taxes went up by one point five, it's due to our public service corporation tax. When we originally, um, put the budget together, there was, um, some concern as it relates to how Dominion, Dominion's departure would impact our revenue. And, um, we were very conservative on what that number looked like. And after working with the Commissioner of Revenues Office over the last three months, um, painstakingly spending time with her and her team, working through the revenue sources to ensure that we're all in the, um, uh, have a better firm grasp for what these revenues are. Um, we, it was determined that we can go ahead and increase that based on the amount of revenue that she is, um, that we're gonna be billing out based on the, um, the actual, um, charges that, that are, that are gonna be occurring. Um, local sales and use tax, um, increasing by about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. This, we kinda spoke to this in one of my budget reports earlier in the fiscal year. Um, this was one of those revenue streams that we saw take a big hit early on in the pandemic. So one thing that the city manager and I, is we were keeping tabs on this throughout the country as well as in, in, in Petersburg, that though there was a drastic drop-off early on in that revenue stream, that was one of the few that actually rebounded strongly and actually were, um, much higher than we had, we had budgeted. They weren't were to the point to where they were in previous years, but they're definitely, um, on the way, on the, on the rise compared to what we budgeted. Mills tax, on the other hand, was one that, um, we're actually decreasing that by about, um, approximately two hundred thousand dollars based on where we're at year-to-date and, um, the trends from, um, the pandemic. They, that, those of, those have rebounded, but not to the extent that we thought they were going to. There was a massive drop, same with local sales and use tax early on, but this one, um, this particular revenue stream has not rebounded to the, um, point that we, we had anticipated. Court fine and forfeiture, this was one, the, um, this revenue stream is, seems to have, um, definitely dropped off and there's a significantly less amount being received than in years past and even what was budgeted. So based on where we're at year-to-date with, um, you know, taking into, um, account, um, the trends of previous fiscal years and, and things of that nature, we, we've, we're recommending that one be decreased. Communication, sales and use tax as well was, um, was, was trending lower than what was budgeted, to about two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And then this last one is our red light fines that, um, obviously we have the, the cameras that are throughout the city, um, in certain areas. That revenue stream has not yielded the revenue that, that we had anticipated as well. And so we're decreasing that by about a hundred and twenty thousand. So this is where I will go through the each category of the, the revenues and kind of break those down accordingly. And I, I kinda spoke on to it on the previous slide, but, um, all the other, all revenue streams are essentially the same except for our public service corporation taxes. And then based on, um, the conversa- like I said, conversations with Commissioner Revenue and her team and our team, we're, we're firmly confident that, that, um, to, we can increase that to two point five million dollars. All the other revenues based on, um, based on the budget, based on what we're billing, we're confident that those numbers will, will be, um, be okay where they at, but not to the level that we can increase and decrease. So again, that, that, that whole general property tax category increases by about one point five, and that's all due to the public service corporation tax increase. Go ahead, Garrett. So let me look here. Like I said, local sales and use tax, we'd originally budgeted three point five and based on where the revenue stream ha- has been coming in month to month, it is, it's, it's on the climb compared to what we anticipated. And, um, we're, we're conservatively increasing it to four million, um, from the three point five based on where we're at year-to-date and things of that nature. And, um, knowing that, that there's a few months that actually, um, the sales and, or the local sales and use tax is actually on a, a two-month delay anyway. So we're actually seeing whenever the, let's say the payments came in in January, that's actually for the time period in, um, November. So we actually see the impacts of the pandemic after the fact. So we catch up, it, it does catch up over time. Um, the other decreases there are banks stock taxes. It's a minor decrease, um, that's based on our year-to-date revenue collection as well as based on previous years and, and kinda analyzing what that data looks like over time. Same thing for the taxes on recordation and wills. A minor decrease cigarette taxes, this was one that um we've kind of been talking about for several fiscal years now. Um, when we're 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 not seeing the revenue that we had anticipated, and that's actually gone down over the last. Handful of fiscal years since we've been here. Um, there was a big surge a few years back, and we received significant amount of money in in. In a few of our rushed times with the commissioner revenue going out and um collecting. For those that weren't actually utilizing the the stamps properly, but in general, the revenue source itself has gone um, has gone down from what it was in previous fiscal years. And in the mills tax, we were budgeting approximately three million, we're actually decreasing it by um. Almost two hundred thousand dollars based on where we were at year to date and um factoring in the trends and things of that nature. Um, that that a lot of these revenue sources um generate. So again, budgeted thirteen point four and it's up by a hundred and six thousand dollars. So this um, this slide here, basically our permits, fees and licenses, those that was a three hundred and sixty-three up to three hundred and seventy-seven, nothing major there. It was just um, some of our um individual revenues were trending a little bit higher, but nothing of magnitude that would. That would move the needle, so to speak, but we just analyzed each revenue source in detail, and um it's yielding about a fourteen thousand dollar increase. The courts, fines and forfeitures um. Originally budgeted four hundred and seventy-four thousand, we're actually recommend, proposing to decrease that down to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. With the caveat that we are going to um spend more time with the the folks in the courts as well as um. The city manager and and finance and folks to figure out why that number is down significantly compared to previous years. Um, and if if we can figure out an answer, maybe we'll have a better understanding of how to capture that moving forward, because that's not really a a revenue source that we can really. Project, so to speak, like we can our our sales and use tax, that that really has more to do with um. The the fines and forfeitures that are that are levied against folks. So we'll we'll definitely have to figure out why that one is so low. And then figure out how to tackle that better moving forward. So that was a decrease for about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the fines and forfeitures. For a revenue of use of money and property, um, a hundred and twenty-two thousand down to ninety-nine, that was based on um the year-to-date. And then kind of looking at the monthly uh revenue that comes in for those accounts. And we're decreasing that down twenty-three thousand dollars. So charges for services, these, this is quite a few slides here, so there there's going to be the total at the bottom at the very end, but there's five or six slides for um. Charges for services, court costs, which again, that might have a lot to do with our um. Decrease in our courts, fines and forfeiture. Um, if tho- those revenues, both, both of those revenue streams are down, so I believe there's probably a direct correlation as to. Why that is the case, but we will definitely determine. What the root cause of that is, but we're decreasing that due to the um, the revenue that has come in year-to-date. Um, next big one there is our EMS fire and rescue, we're decreasing it significantly from a hundred and twenty thousand down to fifty-five thousand based on um. That those transportation fees are definitely coming in lower than we had in um budgeted originally. Um, correction and detention, it's a it's a it's a one-off revenue stream for us, because typically over time, we have received about three to five thousand dollars. For that particular account code, but for this year, we'd actually received about thirty-five thousand already, so that. We we're adjusting accordingly based on what's come in year-to-date for that. Go ahead here. So the next one is going to be charges for sanitation. Um, revenue um has come in a little bit higher than what we had, we had originally budgeted. So we're we're accounting for that, kind of looking at the the month-to-month and um, the the analyzing the trends of that over time as well as. Um, where where we think will be compared to where we are and compared to what was budgeted, so we can safely increase that one. Um, the next few of the 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 next three are essentially um. A lot of the programs are on hold due to the pandemic, so a lot of the revenue that we would have anticipated picking up steam at the second half of the fiscal year have obviously not. Panned out that way, so we're we're adjusting accordingly and lowering the um, the the charges for services parks and rec as well as our cultural enrichment and the. And the library as well. Um, and um, the big one for the planning fees and um charges for services rather. Um, the demolition fees are much lower than we had anticipated, so we're um. Adjusting that account uh, that that category to reflect such. Um, one big thing we've noticed is that since we've gone to predominantly credit card, I believe we're still. Receiving cash anymore, so everything's basically either um. Credit card or check, I believe, what, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, due to the increased volume of credit cards that we've received. We've actually received a lot more revenue for our credit card processing fee, so we're we're adjusting for that as well in this um amendment. So the total um for charges for services is quite, there was quite a bit of charges for service revenue lines that that make up this particular. Category um and quite a bit of increases and quite a bit of decreases, but overall, just a seventeen thousand dollar increase from what was budgeted. From three point oh one to three point oh three million dollars. Um, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hill.
Um, are we going to listen to the whole? Um, um, presentation, then interject or?
Um, I think, I think at this time, if you have a question, we can do a question.
Um, Mr. Floyd, uh, my concern with the uh library. Uh, is that we may lose state aid uh from the library, because we've cut them almost fifty thousand dollars. And uh, that's based on our budget, not saying that they're going to use that much, but if we, if we cut them like the way we have. Uh, we we stand a chance to lose more money. Uh, due to that. Have you talked to Mr. Uh, uh, to the library about that?
Um, Mr. Crocker brought that up to my attention, I believe, after we'd, excuse me, after we'd already submitted this um amendment to city council. And he also stated that it it was based on um, I believe, a four or five-year delay, so this this wouldn't actually. Pan out potentially if it did happen, because it wasn't even confirmed whether or not it would, would or would not. It said there's always a potential that it would. Um.
I think it's more of a, I think it's. In talking to him and 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 one of the board members. Where basically one of the board members, they're very afraid that they're going to lose their state aid, and I wouldn't want us to uh lose that. Uh, and what have you. So uh, I think we really need to look into that before we make a, go any further with that. Um, but you can go ahead with your program, but I I I really would hate for us to lose, to lose our state aid for the library. Uh, due to fact, because we we almost did this last time too. It's almost like we're back where we were, where we were last year, this time doing this. So. Uh, don't know what to tell you, but uh, uh, I really want to see that put back.
And council member, I think, am I online? Okay, uh, council member. Okay, it's uh, um, so it 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 it. That that won't cause us to totally use state aid, but we're absolutely looking at it. So I'm I'm a part of that conversation as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Mm-hmm. Um, Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Smithley.
Um, Robert, can we go back to the parks and recreation? Okay, um, so we're going to have a decrease in be due to the uh recreation programs being on hold.
Correct, yes ma'am. Those two, there's two account codes that make up that that small category, and there are um recreation fees as well as our cemetery administration fees. And um, if, let me pull up something else. At the time, I believe we did let, received less than a thousand dollars through. January for our recreation fees, and it was originally budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars. And um. We basically just adjusted based on the fact that there was no money coming in, so we did not want to. One of our jobs here in this department is to ensure that we're accurately capturing the revenues. And and since the numbers were coming in low and there was no sign of any of the activities picking up in that area. We did not foresee that those revenue streams were going to pick up to the point to where we would gather thirty-four thousand dollars in a, in a five-month period. When we haven't received that much historically in that that category for the entire fiscal year.
Oh, okay. And councilwoman, can I add something?
Yes, Ms. Billie.
And also to Mr. Hill, we're talking about revenues, so we're not talking about expenditures, and so. The problem we have is if we're predicting revenues to come in and they don't, we have a bigger problem. So we haven't got to the expenditure portion of it. So even for library, when we say it's budgeted twenty-eight, we amended it to eight. The reflection is, this is what they have coming in, so we can leave it at a number, but then we create a budget shortfall if we're projecting revenue to come in, that's not going to come. And that's how we get where we came from. So we're not in expenditures right now, we're only talking about revenue collection year-to-date. Am I correct, Mr. Floyd?
Yes, ma'am, we're only on revenue.
Everything here is how much money we've gotten in, based on where we are, we only have a few months left in this fiscal year. So if we budget for parks, for example, that we're going to bring in fifty thousand dollars in revenue, and we're projecting that we're only at seventeen, if we left it at fifty. And and it only comes in at even less than that, that creates a twenty-five thousand dollar shortfall. Same thing with uh library. If there's some way that they're going to bring in the additional twenty thousand dollars in revenue, we would love to see it, but if they don't, then we've created a shortfall in our budget. Because the revenue didn't come in.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Councilwoman Wilson Smith.
Thank you. Um. On page forty-one, I know you've passed this, where you talk about revenue from the Commonwealth and revenue from federal government. These two line items do not include the grant money that we have received.
No, ma'am, this is just the general fund, ma'am. All grant money we receive goes into our grants fund.
Okay. Okay, just want to be sure. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Floyd.
Okay, um, so I guess the next category will be our um revenue from the Commonwealth, um. So sorry, I'm I'm getting caught up, so I apologize that the the delay threw me off for a second. Um, the, this goes back to one of, one of, we originally covered all of the um. The major revenues that stood out, both positive and negative, the communication, sales and use tax was the um. Was the revenue source here that was actually um coming in less than what was. Anticipated in the adopted budget, which accounts for the decrease here. On a positive note, the police state aid and um. As well as our workforce development forensic audit revenue that was actually budgeted last fiscal year. Well, separately, police state aid actually was higher than what we'd originally budgeted, now that we know that that amount has increased, and after working with the police department, we know that that. That we that we will work with them moving forward to ensure that that number is accurately captured moving forward, so that. Um, you know, if it's a higher number or a lower number, we we adjust accordingly. And then the second piece, I didn't want to combine the two together because it would have been confusing, but that was the revenue um. That had been um posted for workforce development forensic audit, that was actually from last fiscal year that that is showing up in the system for this current fiscal year. So we accounted for that, and that that also accounts for the increase here. But overall, this whole category from the Commonwealth decreases due to the communication, sales and use tax revenue coming in lower, and we're projecting lower than what was budgeted. But overall, it's just not a significant decrease, but about thirteen thousand dollar decrease. So next category, um. Kind of the federal government um revenue. One of the things here of note, there was two projects, to your point, Ms. Wilson Smith, the vast one, this isn't um a. Grant per se, but there were two projects that were state reimbursable. Um, projects, the Crater Road Signal project, as well as the Sycamore Street Bridge project. They are actually housed here, and they've been accounted for and approved and appropriated by city council, and in an effort to keep with consistency, we are including this in the amendment. Because it's already been, it's already been um approved, and it needs to be accounted for in these numbers, so that's where the um change comes from with the federal government. Revenue. Um, the next one is our non-revenue receipts. Um, we're showing, we originally budgeted two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for sale of land and property. Through the time that we put this this amendment together, we had had, we had received zero for that. Um, so what we did is we kind of like with the other revenues that were trending really low or zeros at the time. Um, rather than try to keep the number the same and hope for the best at the end of the fiscal year for revenue. Well, city manager just spoke to it a few minutes ago, we wanted to be consistent and ensure that if if the revenue comes in above and beyond what we amended to. And that is wonderful, but the worst thing we want to do is keep the number the same, and the number does not, and the money does not come in. And then we run the risk of expenditures exceeding the revenues and running a deficit for the fiscal year, which is why we zeroed this account out. So next so, next topic, unless there are any more questions, um, is going to be our expenditures. We just covered the revenue piece. Um, at the first half of the presentation. Um, and again, seventy-three point three million dollars was originally budgeted, now it's being amended to seventy-four point five million. The same one point two or million dollar increase with the one point six nine um percent in- increase. Um, this is kind of summary of our general government constitutional, public safety, all of the major categories of the general fund, and it shows them um. Kind of in a summary sheet here, but as as we go through the presentation, it'll actually break them down by department. So I'll go ahead and skip to the next slide, which again, like I did with the revenues, we captured the major. Um, increases and or decreases depending on um wh- what they are. So um. The customer service center, um, the, well, we go by the department, so the city manager's office is where the customer service center that that. That was recently created and and blessed off on by council um was being housed, so obviously the um. The costs that are associated with those um functions and those folks are actually absorbed in the city manager's office, not new employees or new positions or anything like that. It's the functions, it's actually, she thought it was best to be housed there from an accountability standpoint, and a a um, a clean, clean way to. With house it, so that's where it's at. Finance was, we're increasing by about three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars based on the pre-audit services are um. Coming in higher than what was originally budgeted. Um, on a positive note, Riverside Regional Jail Authority, we're actually decreasing the um amount that is being um. Projected to pay to them by about seven hundred thousand dollars. Based on um, and I I believe the city manager can speak more to that if there's questions, but it's um, it's based on the um, the budget that the. The authority and their board had worked up at one of their meetings, that number is being decreased about seven hundred thousand.
So you know what happened there. We recalculated the daily rate. Uh, after the budget was adopted, given the COVID challenges and some of the challenges the cities were having. Uh, I service the treasurer for Riverside, and one of the recommendations was to reduce the daily population rate. Uh, which for the city of Petersburg has resulted in about a seven hundred thousand. We also are trending significantly low in our numbers uh of individuals who are being housed in Riverside. Uh, some of this, you'll see where you see an increased uh revenue for in-home incarceration. Uh, thank you to Ms. Loving and her team, we've actually started to limit the number of people that are going to Riverside, which has also resulted in a reduction in cost.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, next major um, and um expenditure that I wanted to highlight was the resiliency pay that the city council had approved at the last um. City council meeting, um, that's uh, to in about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, then in our non-departmental overall. Is actually decreasing by about six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, but before we freak out over that, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that is accounted for in the column right next to it. And then also, um. Um, when we originally put the budget together, and this will be a a theme when we go through a lot of the departments in the subsequent slides, um, the. Obviously, the the individual employees that waive their health insurance, they receive um. I guess it's a health insurance stipend from the city in the tune of about fifty dollars per paycheck to incentivize um utilizing other or. Other insurance if possible. We'd originally budgeted that to be hitting each and in, each and every department across the city's budget. But for some reason, that never came to fruition, and it was being charged to our non-departmental. Um, area, so that we just basically lowered everyone's department by that amount and moved it over to the non-departmental. So though it's, it looks like a major increase on the non-departmental side, it's actually offset by a decrease in the department, so that's actually. Um, neutral, but I have to explain that, because otherwise it would be kind of confusing why that amount went up so high. And then as well as the payment to the library foundation is being accounted for in this, in this area as well. Next slide here. So this will go through the general government, which is a lot of our administrative functions across the city, um, city council, there was no significant change. City manager's budget, we we just spoke about that um, and on the previous slide, the customer service center is being housed within this department, and that um. That accounts for those in- increases to this department. Um, next one is going to be in our human resources, we have um. I believe two ICMA fellows that are um, that are actually being housed in the, within the human resources budget. And their cost and um, from a personnel standpoint are are being accounted for in this um amendment, that that resulted in the increase. And finance.
Mr. Floyd, um, here's Ms. Councilman.
Councilman Hill, you have a question?
Yes, uh, the city manager's budget, I know you said it increased. Yes, uh, the city manager's budget, I know you said it increased, and that's because of what now, again? The?
Customer service office. We were just trying to determine where to house the customer service unit that's downstairs. And, um, Ms. Kenny with Public Affairs oversees customer service. So, the contract and staff associated with it are ha- have been moved under the city manager's budget.
Okay, all right. But nothing else is in there?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. And if you look at, and on the document itself, there's, um, part-time, full-time employees as well as the contractual obligation. So, if it, yes, those numbers do change. But, so I guess I did kind of misspeak. There are new employees in the city manager's office. But there are new employees that are being charged to our office and, and by way of the customer service, which accounts for the part-time and full-time increase. So, I misspoke, but I didn't. There, there are no new people.
Understand.
Gotcha. Um, and then the final one, um, on this slide is, is finance, our pre-audit services, again, um, originally budgeted in one amount, and it, it's coming in a little bit higher than what was originally budgeted. So, we're accounting for that moving forward. Um, next section, building collections, risk management, budget procurement, central storeroom, IT, nothing, nothing significant changing there. Obviously, um, there's a little bit of increase from an information technology standpoint, but it's not, nothing of significance. It really has more to do with a lot of the obligations that, that they have from a, um, technology standpoint across the city that are being, um, that were originally in previous years probably charged to different departments. But this year, they were, we kind of, um, consolidated a lot of those costs rather than charging the departments. We charge them to IT, so it's a centralized cost, and that, that ensures timely payment as opposed to certain, um, charges being, um, spread out across the city. But overall, um, the general government increases about seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars from the six point one to the six point eight million dollars. Next area is going to be our constitutional officers, um. Commissioner Revenue, no significant change there. Um, City Treasurer, the, um, one thing of note here is they've been carrying a part-time employee that, that is helping with their reconciliations. And, um, we're actually accounting for them in this budget. We, um, it evidently has not been captured properly in the past, and that's on us. Um, and moving forward, we're actually ensuring that we're, we're capturing those costs accordingly, and we've added that in here. And, um, as well as the, um, credit card processing fee expenditures, a lot of those are being housed in, on the treasurer's office as well. So, those two things have accounted for the deep, or increase rather, in their department. Um, nothing of, of significance for the registrar's office, clerk of circuit court, as well as the Commonwealth attorney. Sheriff's office did see an increase of about a hundred thousand dollars, but that, just, just for, um, frame of reference, that's actually offset by revenue coming in from the comp board. It was comp board-approved, um, expenditures. So, we're accounting for those in this, um, budget amendment. And constitutional, obviously, overall went up from four point five to four point seven, about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar increase. So, this next section is going to be our public safety. Um, working, spending a significant amount of time with our public safety folks during this process, um. And we, we were trying to, like we've done in years past, not with just the revenues, but also the expenditures. We want to go through account by account, by department by department, to ensure that we're, um, accurately capturing and projecting the revenues and expenditures in this case for each department. And doing so, um, determined that the overtime for the police department, as well as some of their contractual obligations, um, which we come to find out was, um, I believe it was a server upgrade that was done in previous fiscal years that, that now we're paying out from the police department's budget. So, we accounted for that moving forward, and then that led to their, um, increase of a little less than a hundred thousand dollars. And then working with those same folks, emergency communications, their overtime costs are much lower than we had originally budgeted. So, working with, um, Chief Christian and their team, we were, he was comf- he was comfortable in, um, in lowering those revenues, or I'm sorry, those expenditures for the overtime based on where they were at year-to-date um, at that time. Um, and for animal control, I'm working with, um, Chief Christian again as well on this one. Their part-time costs were significantly lower than what was budgeted, and based on the vacancies and things of that nature, we did some projections based on when they would like to fill some of those positions. Didn't, didn't lower it completely, obviously, didn't zero it out because that would be unrealistic. But we, we took into account when they were trying to bring some folks on and did some healthy projections at that time. Um, fire department, no significant change. Um, the next one is going to be our, um, juvenile, um, um, Ms. Margot's department, VJCCCA. Um, one thing that she's have, of her department's been having some issues with is, um, staffing during the pandemic. And, um, basically, what she, um, what she's doing for this fiscal year to get through is she's used a lot of provisional employees rather than the part of the full-time employees. Um, so for this fiscal year, and this fiscal year only to survive, she's, but we're basically adjusting for those, um, benefits costs that would, that normally would come with a full-time employee that they're not actually expending due to the, um, nature of the provisional employees that they're using and the part-time employees they're using to cover that workload. But obviously, moving forward, the, the plan is to, um, maintain those full-time employees on the long term. So, um, overall, police, I mean, I'm sorry, public safety was a decrease of about, um, fifty-nine thousand dollars. Courts and other public safety, um, nothing of significance in, in this area here. It was originally budgeted two hundred and eighty-three thousand, and it's increased, um, to two hundred and eighty-four thousand. And that was based on a, um, a lease payment or rental payment for, um, one of the district, um, eleventh District Court Services Unit. It was slightly a little bit higher than what we had budgeted, but it was nothing of, of significance. Next one is going to be our, uh, general services, public works, whatever you would like to call it. Um, general services increased. I spoke to it on the revenue side, um, Councilmember Wilson Smith, when you'd asked about the grants. But while the revenue was increased on the, um, the revenue side for those two projects, we're actually accounting for those expenditures as well. And they've already been approved by council and appropriated, but we wanted to ensure that we highlighted that during this, um, this portion of the presentation. Next section is going to be our facilities maintenance, um, originally budgeted one point nine, um, million dollars and were amended at two point zero four. And that, that has a lot to do with the un- unanticipated repairs and upgrades to the various buildings across the city. Um, essentially, the, they're, they're trying to maintain all of the buildings across the city. And if, and based on where they're at year-to-date and spending, and based on the projects that are upcoming, we, we increase that budget accordingly. Rounds maintenance, um, increasing from eight hundred thousand to about eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and give them an additional funding based on their grass cutting, um, contracts that they, they actually have. So, this is one of those, um, increases that, that's going to yield fruit in the way of the grass being cut, um, more frequently and more efficiently moving forward. Uh, refuse collection, there was no major changes at all. Um, overall, the, um, public works, general services is increased by about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Social services, that, that, uh, Department of Social Services, whereas our, as well as our CSA, um, overall, it was a decrease of about fifty-five thousand dollars. And, um, after speaking with Ms. Tice, she asked why that was decreased. And I remember when I was speaking about the, um, the, um, health insurance stipend. The biggest chunk of money for the decrease here was moving those funds that we'd originally budgeted for that stipend from Social Services over to the non-departmental, as well as the CSA, we had budgeted, um, a part-time employee that I believe is being charged actually to this Department of Social Services. So, we were able to move those funds around and, and, and account for them accordingly. So, that's about a fifty-five thousand dollar decrease.
All right. At this time, Mr. Floyd, we have a question for Councilwoman Wilson Smith.
Thank you. Under social services, there's a two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar fee for building repairs. Is that within the contract, we make any repairs to the building and not the owner? Do you want me to ask it again? If I didn't do it right?
Ma'am, I heard the question. I just didn't know if it was addressed to me, um, that.
I don't, I don't know who it goes to, but it, in looking at the social services, page eighty-eight, for building repairs, in twenty nineteen, we had nothing there. Twenty nineteen, twenty, adopted budget, there was nothing there. But now, in twenty twenty-one, we have, we've gone from two hundred and thirty-six thousand to two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So, my question is, since this is, we're renting this building, does not, is not the renter responsible for the repairs in the building?
Uh, Robert, so, uh, my understanding is they are. Um, I want us to, to, to just take a look at what that number, uh, represents. Okay.
That, that understandable. Um, I know that a lot of the social services account codes that in the past, um, we had a writ, we would budget for, um, accounts to be at a set amount. And then throughout the fiscal year, they would programmatically move them where they were at. Um, but this could be one of those cases. And I see Tangela was raising her hand, so maybe she has an answer for that.
Yes, Tangela's hand is up. I guess, Tangela?
Yes, um, Councilwoman Wilson Smith, you are correct. The contract does not cover, um, the owner is responsible for repairs at that, um, thirty-eight eleven Corporate Road location. I cannot, I cannot speak to the two hundred thousand dollars that's in the budget, but you are correct. They're responsible for the repairs at that location.
Okay, so that, that, um, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars.
Need to be removed.
Right. Um, okay. And the other question I had for this line item is, um, the three hundred and eighty-seven thousand that's paid, that's the state's payment for the rental of the building, correct?
The city is responsible for, um, the state pays eighty-five percent of the rent. The other city is responsible for fifteen.
Correct.
Okay. Because it, it went up from three eighty-four to three eighty-seven. I know that doesn't seem like a whole lot, but.
Uh, written into the agreement, uh, um, council member, there is, there's a small increase, uh, each year, and that's what you're saying.
Okay.
In the agreement we signed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm done. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Garrett. So, um, next one is going to be our leisure and cultural affairs, recreation and community engagement. Um, decrease from four hundred and ninety-nine thousand to about four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Kind of like with our revenue coming in, I mean, being budgeted lower due to a lot of the programmatic activities that would typically be taking place for the remainder of the, the fiscal year. Um, the expenditures as well are being reduced based on the, um, activities not taking place and the part-time costs being, being lowered due to those programs not, not ongoing. Same thing for the library, um, a lot of their, um, part-time employees. We, we lowered that amount based on, um, operation of the library moving forward in the, um, at least in the next four months. Um, next piece is going to be our workforce development. Obviously, council had approved to, um, no longer, um, account for that in, in the city's budget. So, we obviously have to account for that for what had been spent up until that point, and that's where this number is. So, there's a decrease significantly, and then moving forward, that cost will, will no longer be there. Um, and then nothing significant, um, or no change at all actually in the cemetery's administration. So, total of two hundred and seventeen thousand dollar decrease from one point six down to one point four million dollars for leisure and cultural affairs.
I, I have a question.
Question, Vice Mayor Smithley?
Uh-huh. Uh, Robert, so the decrease of the recreation and also the library. So, what, 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 what happened once, um, the governor and every, you know, the pandemic, um, gets better? And possibly by the summer, the kids will go back to probably fifty percent doing stuff, um, with the recreation department or the library?
Right. And, and I, maybe I did a horrible job of explaining, um, with both the recreation as well as the library. And prom- I'll use the recreation. I'll start with them first. We'd originally budgeted about sixty thousand dollars for part-time costs to, um, to account for a lot of the programmatic things, knowing that it was less than it was in previous years. Through the end of December into early January, there would only have been approximately fifty-eight hundred dollars spent on part-time costs, and we're amending it to thirty-five. So, there's still money in there for, when those programs rebound. It was just, it was, it was, it wouldn't have been prudent for us to leave the sixty thousand in there, knowing that there's still another fifty-two thousand or fifty-four thousand dollars that hadn't been spent. So, and when we had talked with Ms. Tammy and, and Mr., um, Mr. Crocker, as we were going over this amendment to them, we explained, they, they shared a lot of the same questions with us. And we explained, though we lowered those, those expenses, they weren't lowered to the point to where operations couldn't still be done. We left in enough, um, buffer to where that if operations were to be, um, go back to normal, even some resemblance of normal, that there would be funding available for those activities to pick up. And obviously, moving forward into next fiscal year, it would be, um, addressed at that time as well for the full fiscal year.
Councilwoman, also a specific note is our fiscal year ends on June thirtieth. So, our summer programming cuts over to fiscal year. So, July first is when many of them, so what we're counting for is, remember, this started July first. So, July and August would have been our heavy summer programming months. So, those times have already occurred. So, as he starts to prepare your budget for next year, you will account for those, uh, individuals and those costs in next year's budget. Much of this budget was during the shutdown during the pandemic starting on July first. So, that's why you see the numbers coming down so low, because there's really no way to make up these numbers.
Thank you.
Question, Councilwoman Wilson Smith?
Yes, under workforce development, there's a note, city council made decision to no longer have this function to be a part of the city's function. So, why, why, why the fifteen thousand? What's going to happen with that?
That's money that's already been spent, ma'am, and I.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Floyd.
Go ahead, Garrett. Next area is going to be, um, planning, um, development services. Um, planning, um, originally budgeted three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, and amending it up to five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Um, one of the big key, um, things here is the individual that, um, the, well, first and foremost, there was a lot of turnover in the department after a recent meeting with Mr. Tabor. Um, during this process, he, he kind of stressed that quite a bit. But there was an additional position that was added to this department, and I believe it was discussed several months ago by the city manager, and one of the big key components of that, that, that function for that position was going to be handling the AMPAC, um, as well as the technologies on project that we have ongoing there. And, um, a lot of the focus was going to, I believe that they wanted an individual that would be focused. One of their main focuses would be that, and that's, that's where this individual is being housed. So, obviously, the, the benefits and things of that nature that are associated with that position are being accounted for here. Economic development went up from three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, obviously, um, I had to highlight the fact that this has been a city, city council's, um, priority for, for years, and even so much that it was incorporated into the strategic plan. Um, but the key component here for why there was an increase is our, um, tourism and employee and then other part-time employees within economic development that were not previously charged to economic development actually are now being charged to economic development. So, that's where the, the funding has shifted from, from where they were previously at to where they're at now. And that, that's making up that, that increase there. Um, neighborhood services, freedom support center, and museums and visitor services, um, nothing of significance there. Some minor, um, increases or decreases, but nothing of the magnitude that, um, that moves the needle, so to speak. So, originally budgeted one point eight nine million, um, being amended down to one point seven four million. About a hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease. Last section is going to be our debt service, schools, transfers, and, um, other general fund uses, which is what we, we deem, um, non-departmental. Debt service, schools, and transfers, nothing is changing there. Uh, our debt service is still the same amount of three point five three one million based on our debt schedule from our, uh, financial advisors. Schools is, um, remaining at the ten million, transfers remaining what they are. Um, obviously, we had touched on it, um, that Riverside Regional Jail Authority decreased, our resiliency pay increased, um, health insurance stipend increased. And then, um, we obviously. Increased, um, health insurance stipend increased, and then um, we obviously um. Not obviously, we built in a um, a contingency within the general fund in our non-departmental to account for um. The unknown. Um, a lot of um leave payouts for a lot of employees that are that are that we know are about to retire or are retiring. Um, as well as employees that are leaving. So we built in the contingency to account for that, that that the department budgets can't absorb. So that one was originally budgeted seven point five and it's amended up to seven point eight. Okay, Garrett. Um, special thanks again, as always, for the city manager for her support and guidance, as um, well as our budget team, Mr. Williams, Ms. Tolleson and Ms. Mann. And a special thank you to Ms. Brittany Flowers for her dealing with me and my team, um, working through the revenues for this um amendment. It was, it was, it was exhausting, um. We appreciate her assistance for that. Um, and everything that she was doing for us to help us get to where we're at now. And any other questions?
All right, any other questions for members of council? Uh, Councilwoman Wilson Smith?
Uh, yes, I noticed in a lot of your departments. There are line items for other contractual services, which in some cases went up significantly. Facilities management went from two hundred thousand to four hundred and seventy thousand. Grounds went from three hundred and four thousand, four hundred and forty-five. City council went from twenty to thirty-two. City manager went from three thousand to a hundred and ten thousand. Information technology went from two hundred and two thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. Police went from a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And neighborhood services went from two thousand five hundred to fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five. Can you spell out these contractual services that make such an increase?
Yes, ma'am. I I I covered them on the individual slides, but I will go through it. Um, I'm going to try to capture all of the ones that you said, um. Starting with. Let's see, facilities ma- uh maintenance, that was, I had spoke to that previously about how that there's a lot of um. Uke people, a lot of the buildings that that um. A lot of the projects and a lot of the repairs that have come come about that. That have, that we're not necessarily anticipated. And one thing that we're trying to do from a whole budgetary standpoint is try to stop lumping. Things into our other contractual services. That tends to be the catch-all for a lot of things. And what we're doing for this. Upcoming budget years, we're actually going to have it for every single department across the board. An itemized list of what those contractual services are and how much those amounts are. But in lieu of that, moving forward, just to capture what we've done in this amendment, the facilities amount increased based on the um. The amount of money that they are spending on a lot of the repairs across the board for the city buildings and um. That just happens to be charged to that contractual line.
Are all of these city-owned buildings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it, okay, all of these are city-owned, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Um, city councils, I believe, was the next one. You had stated that one increased because that's where um. The food for the for the um city council meetings that were being, when the food was brought in, they were being, they they. They were being charged to that account code, so we're we're adjusting it based on the year-to-date um for those um accounts. Or for those meals, rather. For the city manager's budget, that one increased, again, goes back to the customer service center. Um, there's both part-time, full-time employees as well as a contractual obligation with a vendor. Or um, organization that actually um. Staffs quite a few of those customer service folks. And um, like the city manager stated, we were trying to find a place to house it. We house it in the city manager's budget. And the increase um for the contractual services is because of that and and only because of the um. Customer service center. Let me try to think of the next one that you.
Now, if we are, if the city manager's budget increased to show um. The increase in salaries, which included the new department under her, then we're counting it twice, aren't we? Because it, how can you be under salary and then be under contractual services? How can it be under both?
Because some of the employees are actually employees of the city, the other ones are contractual employees via a um tempor- temp- temporary agency. That staffs um that that department, ma'am. So we have both. Full-time and part-time employees that are sit, I mean, um, employees of the city. As well as employees that are um contractual employees that are um paid for out of the other contractual account. Ma'am.
Okay.
Um, the next one was IT. Um, I briefly kind of touched on that. There was a lot of expenditures that um. Across the board were being charged to departments, but somehow along the way, um. Some of those have been shifted both purposely and unpurposely. Um, that have been hitting IT's budget. And after working with Mr. Van Voorhees, we we kind of accounted for all of those knowns. That we knew about and we accounted for them in the amendment, and that's why that increased. But it was, it was expenditures that were already occurring across the city, but they are being captured now in IT's budget. And again, as part of the budget development for this next coming fiscal year, we are going to approach it a little. Little harsher from a standpoint of now we need, we're going to identify those costs in a breakdown in a way that, you know, we can, we can show upfront. Early and often throughout the fiscal year, as well as at the end of the fiscal year, where we were at year-to-date and at the end of the year, based on those projects and those. Uh, expenses that we account for ahead of time. So that way that there's, there's any questions about what is this money for, so to speak. We can, we can show that documentation and say, this, this, this five hundred thousand, I'll just use that number. Five hundred thousand dollars accounts for this, 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 and this, and it costs this, 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 and this. And what was the other one, ma'am?
Uh. They were, I'll just name all of them and you can, we've touched on some facilities management. Grounds. I believe you said that was due to the increase in the uh grass cutting.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you've explained city council, city management, you've explained information technology. I think you said police department had to do with the overtime?
No, ma'am. Their overtime was actually um increased, but theirs was due to, they'd recently done upgrades to um their servers. Um, and public safety, and that was, um, we did not do an accurate job of capturing that in this. Current budget, but after working with Chief Kristen, we were able to account for that and adjust it accordingly. And moving forward, we'll be able to account for that as well.
Okay, and neighborhood services?
You get to them, ma'am, if you don't mind.
Mr. Floyd, while you're looking at that, some of those that relates to neighborhood services increases could have also taken place because of a number of demolitions and or contractual services. So as you're looking for that, those are two things to keep in mind.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Wilson Smith, that's all your questions?
Um. Yeah, I think I've got papers here I'm going through. Uh, I think, how many employees are in neighborhood services?
Give me one second, ma'am. Apologize for not knowing every department off the top of my head, but I'll have.
Councilwoman, Neighborhood Services is the formerly code department merged in together. So it it has moved around a little bit over time, but we had budgeted fourteen positions there. That includes your building inspector, your inspectors, all of the permitting functions. That were initially in fire, then we moved them to planning, and now they're in office of their own.
Okay. Is that the reason for the increase in salaries and wages?
Uh, bringing them all back together, yes. It's been a, it's been all, it shouldn't actually, we call it an increase, but as we've started to feel, what does this department look like? Uh, it's taking on a uh, a challenge of its own, but there's a lot of uh people who've been moved into this department. Uh, we actually unfunded some of the positions initially. For example, we only had one neighborhood services coordinator, so. This is a new uh department that we created this fiscal year, however.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, uh, this is uh scheduled for. Public hearing, so at this point in time, we will uh take a public comment. On. The amendment to the FY twenty twenty-one general fund budget. All right, we will get started and right now, um. We'll start off with uh.
It was Mr. Ingram had his hand up first.
Mr. Ingram first, yes.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good afternoon, Patrick. Good afternoon, uh, eight thirty-six Southfield, Gilfield Drive. Um, you know, I just, I want to just note on the record that I was a little concerned about. Um, at a moment, we had a, in the middle of a conversation, there was some some confusion. Um, in correction in regards to accidental appropriation, and that's concerning. Um. But really more diving into de- looking through this um, this proposal. Uh, more specifically, city resiliency pay. Um, I'm just questioning, uh, what about the the continuous needs of Petersburg residents in the midst of this pandemic? Um, you know, more specifically, upgrades to our water building and collections, information technology, infrastructure. Uh, that will decrease the proposed lengthy uh upgrade times to see a new system that will work for all. Um. But you know, we have Petersburg residents that are jobless, um homeless, and are barely able to keep the water flowing in their pipes. Um, and you know, it's just concerning that we're not looking at appropriated funding, especially now that we don't have a homeless. Shelter in our city to open emergency homeless shelters, even leveraging gyms and unused cities facilities. And leveraging some of those appropriated fundings for operational costs. Um, you know, even the expeditious rollout of actual free and accessible citywide broadband for all. Um. You know, we, I I do understand that a lot of these employees that were working on the front line are deserving of these um. Of resiliency pay, uh, such as bus drivers and nine-one-one dispatchers, but you know. At the beginning of the pandemic, many offices were actually closed to the public, um therefore their actual occupational hazard. Uh, to being exposed to COVID nineteen was limited, which is why I think appropriation should be considered for. For all residents who are in the midst of this pandemic. Um, you know. We have working families who are still working at their jobs and not having a telecommute option. Um, and they're are more at risk i- i- in their, in their roles. I- in grocery stores and in working in critical capacities that keep our economy flowing. And so in short, I just, I question, where where is the resiliency pay for the residents of Petersburg? Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Barb Rudolph.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Barb Rudolph, sixteen seventy-five. Mount Vernon Street. Thank you. I I wanted to say I um, I'm very pleased that this presentation was given in so much detail with a lot of explanation. And it was also good to see um, the questions that came from council members. Because that's encouraging, because I know some of our reviews have been, seemed much more perfunctory. And with less interest. So I just, I just want to thank you all for for being interested in looking, actually looking at it and asking questions. And also to the staff and the city manager for providing a lot of explanations and in providing the context and the perspective needed. Since we're really, we're um past the halfway point of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So what you're talking about now is any kind of mid-course corrections. You don't have that, by the time you would implement them, it only affects about a third of the year. So I don't really think that. Anything about this proposed amendment. Can be changed in a major way. I mean, it it reflects the reality of what you're getting, bringing in and what you're spending. It does bring to mind that um. In in talking about the budget, if you all were to start providing information at a summary level. On all of the categories of expense, like, you know, the person, the personnel, the the benefits, the contractual. Um, the the supplies, maintenance, et cetera, all of those categories. To have a cross-cutting um summary for the for the whole organization, because I think that's where you see. If you're spending more or less money in certain categories, because you can tell when you look at. The ups and downs between and among different um organizations within city government. That um, depending where something is is paid for. It may or may not be clear of how much is being spent overall on various things. And even to use an example of one of the areas questioned, billing and collections. Or not billing and collections, actually, the customer engagement center, I think that's what it's called, that. It's a combination of city employees and contract employees, and some of that is not real clear from um the presentation. So I I'm just asking that as you do budget development, maybe you consider doing um, putting that into your budget development and your future reports. Also, one, just one question about today is. Um, I know that that we've talked about like various interns and people being hired and part-time people and so forth. Some of that. I don't know whether the amended expenses reflect a whole year or a partial year. So that's going to impact what gets budgeted for next year. To be very interested to see um, even more detail for next year's budget. Thanks.
Garrett, any more hands?
Um, yes.
Lisa. Yes. Can you unmute Ms. Lisa's account, please?
She's unmuted.
All right, good afternoon.
Lisa's iPhone?
Okay. All right, um. We'll move on then, Garrett, who's next?
I don't see any more hands, ma'am.
Okay. All right, um, Mr. Floyd, um, thank you so much for the presentation and also rest of the city staff that contributed all their time. Um. I will entertain any more questions from members of city council.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Not if we have no other questions. All right, Councilman Hill?
Um. The only uh thing I I I like for, before we, you know, get to, I know we're not at the point where we're going to vote this in, but I like for. To be assured that the uh. The the budget committee, uh, if they gotten together with the uh directors to make sure that. This is feasible, you know, and what have you, because I see, you know, a lot of increases, decreases and things of that na- nature, and I understand. We're halfway through, but I just really want to make sure that they uh, you know, got in contact with their directors. Not saying that they haven't, I know, I don't know. For sure not. The only thing I I'm aware of, because board members called me from the library about the fifty thousand dollars, and they may um lose some money behind that. So I'm concerned about that. And then, uh, going forward, I really want us to be more diligently about the insurance. Uh, the healthcare uh in which we're giving to the city of Petersburg. Uh, I know we talk about this every year and things are going up, and I know we've been giving fifty dollars stiflings and things of that nature, but. I know it's going up all around, but we're in a group type situation where we should be able to get better uh healthcare and things of that nature. So I really want us to. Really focus our attention on those things and uh. And at the appropriate time, I I like to talk about the homelessness uh in our city, but we probably, I probably do that on my comments, but those are all the things I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, uh, this was our public hearing. And um, next we will uh. At the next meeting, uh, we will be uh voting on the amendment. Okay, thank you a lot, Mr. Floyd, and. Um. We will move on to item eleven B. Which is consideration to appropriate the balance of urban highway, set aside funds and the amount of. Two million, six hundred, one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cent from the Virginia Department of Transportation. So move. Right, um, who will be preventing Ms. Benavides on this item?
Mr. Floyd, could you speak to the appropriation request?
This is.
Okay, I can, I can talk for this, that's not a problem. Uh, this is basically a consideration appropriate, uh, each year from BDOT, we receive. Uh, this is basically a consideration appropriate, uh, each year from VDOT, we receive an appropriation, some is carryover, some is brand new. Uh, we are basically doing an adjustment of uh, two point six million dollars in our appropriation uh, for uh, VDOT. Is Mrs. Tyus here and can she speak to anything extra that we need to add to this?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think uh, Councilman Hart had, had made a motion to accept and I was ready uh, second that. Uh, and this is correct.
Yes, all right, we have a motion, motion in a, um, in a second. Then we'll open up the floor for the public hearing on the appropriation for the urban highway set aside funds from VDOT in the amount of two million six hundred one thousand seven hundred sixty one dollars and fifty cent. This is the public hearing, if seeing, okay, we have a hand up, um, Garrett, Lisa's iPhone?
Lisa's iPhone, you are unmuted.
Got to unmute yourself.
I assume they're having some kind of difficulties.
Okay, any other hands?
No, sir.
All right, seeing all the hands is probably carrying his clothes. Any questions for members of council? If not, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, could you please call the room?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers? Councilmember Hart?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smithley?
Aye.
Mayor Per.
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Next, we move on to item eleven C. Consideration to approve the supplemental appropriation in an amount of seven million three hundred ninety seven thousand one hundred eighty one dollars for the Petersburg Public Schools for the current fiscal year, second reading.
Mayor and the council, this is the request from the schools based on, this is a one-time scenario, but basically uh, they've asked for, because the council does approve all of their appropriation, they've asked for our approval of the changes. A lot of changes that we're seeing from an appropriation have a lot to do with COVID and one-time carryover and one-time additional funding. And so this was a request from the public schools uh, for their budget, not our budget.
Mr. Mayor, I entertain a motion to approve, Councilman Hill?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the uh, recommendation.
I second.
Okay.
Mayor Per.
And we have a s- second from Vice Mayor Smithley. All right, now this is a public hearing, so we'll open the floor for any public comment on the consideration to approve the seven million three hundred ninety seven thousand one hundred eighty one dollars for the Petersburg Public Schools for the current fiscal year. Um, we have Mr. Patrick Ingram, could you unmute him, Garrett?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, again, Patrick Ingram, eight thirty six South Gill Field Drive. Um, you know, my, my only comment is that anything that we can do to focus in on the modern, the modernizing of our schools, um, upgrading our bus fleets and just really engaging to improve our overall um, infrastructure of our educational institutions here in Petersburg, uh, should be um, should be um, accepted gracefully, uh, because we have a long way to go when it comes to improving um, our educational offerings to the students of um, the, the families here in Petersburg. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands, ma'am.
Okay, we don't see other hands. Okay, um, a question, Councilwoman Wilson Smith?
Question about.
You're, you're muted?
Okay, am I unmuted now?
Okay, we can hear you now. Yes, we can.
I just had a question about our procedure, because at the last council meeting on the fifth, we tabled this until today. And we said because it was new to the agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
But it was, if we decided at the December eighth meeting um, to approve this and we had, it was then called the first reading, why was it considered new when we brought it up again?
It initially had to be advertised as a public hearing. It couldn't be done where it was a first reading only and then the second meeting, it comes back as being approved. You actually had to do a public hearing first before taking um, any comments or anything. So it had to be advertised in the newspaper, um, as well as a public hearing where public comments had to be done on it first.
Okay, right.
Okay, okay.
So good.
All right, if there's no more questions. Uh, Councilman Cuthbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Um. I. That was a good question that uh, Ms. Wilson Smith asked, and I think the answer she got the second time was correct. The answer she got the first time was not correct. The answer that she got the first time was because it was new. Um, it wasn't because it was new. It was because it had, the staff had not advertised it. So in order to comply with the state statute, we had to, had to advertise it. And I think that's the only reason why there was uh, this had to be basically a, uh, well, it had to be advertised. Uh, let me turn to the, the procedure that we're, or the accounting procedure that we're following. And I'm supportive of this. Uh, I want to see it pass, but uh, are we, is this seven million dollars now in the city's coffers? I mean, do we have this? What's the number? Seven million?
Seven point three million, sir.
Seven point three million. Is that seven point three million that's sitting in our bank account right now?
Uh, could you pull up the uh, chart, Mr. uh, IT person? So these look like carryover funding that are in their bank accounts. So this isn't the city's funds that they're asking to carry over in this case. These are funds that it looks like carryover from FY twenty uh, from other sources, federal, there's some local, if you look, it's a combination of different sources of the funding. Uh, could you pull the chart up for page one thirty eight, Garrett? Yes. So if you look at this, it gives you a breakdown of where all of these funds are. There's a combination. There's some local funding sources, state and federal funding sources uh, that they're asking to carry over and, and reappropriate.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Seven million dollars.
I just, I just questioned the language that we're using here. We're talking about the city is appropriating this money, but it's not our money. So I mean, I could understand how we would be appropriating money if it was in our bank account.
We actually, and uh, Tony, and one of the unique things within uh, Virginia is that they don't have the ability to do appropriations for themselves. And, and part of the conversation, e- even calculating where we get to the one percent, this actually wouldn't call, in some cities, the budget of both the city and the schools are in a combined budget document. And so in this case, we each year we go through and we actually approve their budget or appropriate their budget for them to spend it. So this is actually in their portion of the budget, not the city's portion. So when we were calculating whether or not we had to have the formal public hearing, we have to calculate our total budget plus their total budget to come. So it's very uh, and I think our city attorney can talk a little bit more about legally what we have to do for the schools. But since I've been here, I noticed every year we have on the school's budget, a separate hearing to approve their budget as well as our appropriation to their budget. Mr. Williams?
That's right. I, I, the reason this appears on the gen, I, I recommend uh, an, an ordinance and a public hearing on any appropriation. Uh, but state code requires that uh, if the appropriation is uh, one percent of your, your total budget, um, then you're required to do a, a public hearing on it. And so these ones actually were carried over a- as a result of that. And the manager's right, when we're talking about our budget, we actually do combine it with the school's budget uh, i- in order to make that calculation.
Well.
Councilman Cuthbert?
Uh, I'm, I'm ready to vote in favor of this, but it just seems strange to me that the ordinance it says, itself says that Petersburg is making an appropriation. I, I don't think that's what's happening here, but uh, anyway, um, the substance I understand and I'm ready to support it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion back, Councilman Hill, a second by um, Vice Mayor Smithley. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please call the room?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith? Is she on the line?
She's muted right now.
She's on mute.
Okay.
Key.
You still muted?
There you go.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Councilmember Hart? Is he still on? I think he might have.
He's unmuted, I'm not sure he's sitting now.
Councilmember Hart?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smithley?
Aye.
Mayor Per.
Aye.
Thank you, we'll move on. The item eleven D, a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance authorizing the execution and recordation of a deed of vacation and quitclaim of property at thirty seventh Sligo Avenue, parcel ID zero one four zero one zero 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 one related to a fifteen and sewer easement on the property. Do Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent.
Good afternoon.
Um, this request is related to the Pin Oaks redevelopment. The contractor is realigning the sanitary sewer and as such, they will be abandoning some existing sanitary sewer. They are requesting to uh, vacate and quitclaim the existing easement on that sewer that they will be abandoning. Uh, fairly straightforward and minor request on their part.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barnes. I mean, at this time, we opened up the floor, opened the public hearing for the execution of the deed of vacation quitclaim for thirty seventh Sligo Avenue for the sewer easement on the property. All right, seeing no hands, this public hearing is closed. Um, next, any questions from members of council? I entertain a motion at this time.
So move.
Okay.
All right.
I have a question, I have a question.
All right, question, Councilwoman Wilson Smith?
Um, Mr. Barnes, some time ago, there, there was an issue with the connections, the, the connections between that property and the um, Battlefield Park property. And the line that connected them both, there was a problem with that sewer line. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
Councilwoman, to the best of my knowledge, uh, Pin Oaks development outfalls to the Pin Oaks uh, pump station, which is at the end of Sligo Ave.
Uh-huh.
So I don't believe that they're directly connected and I'm, and I'm not aware of the situation that you're addressing.
Okay, and, and I apologize for not knowing exactly how to address it with the um, with the correct jargon. But I am asking you, if you would at least look into this, I, I know what I'm saying, but I'm unable to explain it to you as I should be able to. If you don't mind, would you please at least look at the connection between the park? Um, I know we addressed it several times in the past. And I will look for the information that I'm talking about. But just to be sure that we're, we're all straight, if you don't mind looking at that, I appreciate.
Sure, I'll, I'll dig in and see what I can find.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions from members of council? All right, seeing no other hands. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Smithley, a second by Councilman Hill. Madam Clerk, could you please call the room?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Hart?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smithley?
Aye.
Mayor Per.
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Next, we move on to item eleven E. Public hearing and consideration for adoption of an ordinance to amend and re-adopt chapter one, section one dash one through one dash nineteen of the Petersburg City Code in furtherance of the city's comprehensive code update. Mr. Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, honorable members of council. Um, last month, we had some discussion on this, like most localities across the state, I would imagine a- across the entire country. Um, the city of Petersburg publishes its significant uh, ordinances in something called the city's code of ordinances. Uh, this is a collection of uh, ordinances that impose criminal penalties, ordinances that deal with taxes uh, a- and the like. And we published that through a company known as Municode. Um, I, I discovered in my time here that, that over the years, apparently some of that has not been updated. We're, we're talking about probably a period of about twenty years. Uh, some of the uh, ordinances that council has adopted did not get published in that uh, in that uh, published code of ordinances. And so what we decided in December, what council decided in, in December was to have me go through that entire uh, code of ordinances, which if you printed it, it's about as thick as uh, two or three phone books stacked upon each other. And so every month, or approximately every month, I'm going to try to bring a section of that code to you. Uh, and essentially what, what I'm asking you to do is to re-adopt what's printed. There'll be very minor changes if, if any are needed. In this case, there's only one. Uh, if you look at page one fifty eight, I believe it is, of your council package. Um, there's a provision in there under section uh, one dash sixteen, uh, I added section B. And the reason for adding that item is that the state code requires that language in order to authorize my office to prosecute uh, certain misdemeanor violations, which is my understanding, has been historically prosecuted uh, for decades. And, and that is to prosecute violations of the building code, violation of the uniform statewide uh, building code, uh, a uniform statewide fire prevention code uh, and other uh, misdemeanor violations involving city codes. So that, that language is just required by state code. Otherwise, that, this reflects what is currently printed in the code. So I would ask that you adopt this, uh, and I'm going to bring these to you approximately every month, depending on the size of the ordinances until we get all the way to the end.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, this is a public hearing, so I will open up the floor for public comment on the ordinance to amend and re-adopt chapter one through one nineteen of the Petersburg City Code. Updating the comprehensive code. All right, seeing no hands. Public hearing is closed. Um, Councilman Hill?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I move that we adopt the ordinance for the uh, Municode. Second.
All right. A second by Councilman Hart. Any questions from members of council? Seeing no hands. Madam Clerk, could you please call the room?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Hart?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smithley?
Aye.
Mayor Per.
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Next, move on to item twelve, the public information period. A public information period limited in time to thirty minutes should be part of an order of business at each regular council meeting. Each speaker should be a resident or business owner of the city and should be limited to three minutes. No speaker should be permitted to speak on any item scheduled for consideration on a regular document in the meeting at which the speakers speak. The order of speakers, limited by a thirty minute time period, shall be determined as follows. First, according logical order of the notice, persons who have notified the clerk no later than twelve o'clock noon of the day of the meeting. Second, according logical order of their sign up, persons who have signed the sign up sheet placed by the clerk in the rear of the meeting room prior to the prior to the meeting removed from the consent agenda. Ms. Jackson, you have anyone signed up?
Yes, I have one person who signed up. That is Mr. Gary Tally.
We'll stop with Mr. Gary Tally and everyone else can raise their hand in the Zoom and they'll be recognized. Mr. Tally?
Um, before I get started, whoever is controlling my screen, this is really not working for accommodations. I can see the. They can't see me. And that's just really not appropriate either. Sometimes I was seeing in the background was the captioning, not the city manager's screen. So we need, anyway, from our public comment, I'd like to ask, do we or are we going to make a bid to bring the maintenance distribution center to Petersburg? We're getting pushed back from the community where they're trying to move to. Well, our location here in Petersburg, the intersection to 985, 295 and 460 makes us a great location for.
Mr. Tally must have went out. Mr. Mayor, I can't hear him.
It looks like he muted himself again, and I believe he has a, having a serious connection problem, given the pixelation of his voice.
Okay.
Okay. Um. Next up? All right, um, Garrett, who is the next hand raised? Want to go with, um, Michelle Merle's?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, um, I'm Michelle Merle at 131 South Market Street. I just wanted to say that yesterday was Martin Luther King Junior Day, and I am disappointed that there was nothing that was done for it by the city of Petersburg. I spent the day walking around Petersburg and picking up garbage, as that is a big initiative here in Petersburg right now. Did you know that Martin Luther King Day is the only federally designated national day of service? We should have had some acknowledgement of that. If I can get an email or a text about the meeting today, we couldn't, we could have put out a text or email about Martin Luther King Day and the things that could be done around the city to celebrate it. After all, this holiday started in Petersburg in 1973. We should be very proud of the fact that almost 50 years ago, the city of Petersburg started it all. I lived in Petersburg, or I'm sorry, I lived in Arizona during the late eighties, when Arizona refused to allow it to be a holiday, and I hated that. I cannot believe that I now live where it all started and there's no acknowledgement whatsoever. People complain about the blight, the violence, et cetera, here all the time. An important way to combat that is to have civic pride. After all, if you have pride in the things that you own and where you live, it goes a long way to ending those problems. All I hear around here is that before X happened in Petersburg, it was a great city. But if you want to get back to when this was a great city, Petersburg needs to have civic pride. We should have signs proclaiming Petersburg was the first to celebrate Martin Luther King Day. No one cares that this is the Crete Myrtle City. How do I know this? Just look at our civic pride. We have none. We should be promoting our African-American history. After all, there's a great interest in the National Museum of African-American History and Culture in DC, which is only three hours away from here. I saw on Facebook the other day, someone said that no one cared about Civil War history here in Petersburg. I do not believe that is true, but there is so much more than the four years of Civil War history here. Why is the Martin Luther King safe house allowed to fall into disrepair? Why is the Victoria Adams House, where we even have pictures of Martin Luther King being there, allowed to fall into disrepair? Both of these houses have essentially been abandoned. Why is the city not finding the owners for every little thing that the municipal code allows? With the idea of eventually either forcing the owners to sell or spend a lot of money on them. After all, that is what happened to the house that I live in. The people who owned it moved away and after a couple of years of the city nickel and diming them so much, they decided to sell at a loss and I got a good deal. With African-American history, we could bring people into the city to see these houses and learn these fascinating facts. We could be displaying our civic pride and show people that there's so much history here. History that today is being ignored and being allowed to fall into disrepair. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Patrick Ingram?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Patrick Ingram, 836 South Gilfield Drive. Um, I first wanted to start off by saying that municipal leaders, senators and delegates consistently send out information to keep their constituents in the loop about what's going on. Um, Councilwoman Tresska Wilson Smith, uh, does this with her newsletters and it is, you know, concerning as well as a shame that that's how many of us residents, um, in other words, receive information. So I guess my question, uh, to you all is, when does the remaining council expect to disseminate information for us outside of these meetings to meet, uh, the, the need of the constituents? That can be through an avenue of Facebook Live, um, answering questions on, on Twitter or other social media outlets, or even leveraging the city's social media, um, outlets. Um, the Ward five side of Pecum Street, um, has seen an entirely new pavement, um, installed. And my question is, why is it that the Ward six side still looks as if it's experienced a war? Um, equity and even an allocation of safe, drivable roads, we should have that equity. If we can't have equity with our streets, how can we have equity in them when it comes to the fair distribution of cares and CDBG funding, which impact the lives of residents in Ward six and beyond? Um, also, I think it's imperative that we look into the Wegmans Distribution Center attempt in Richmond and see if that's an opportunity that we can capitalize on. Um, I also ask that we please, um, in the next meeting, have a, a public health or, or an individual that has a background in public health or, or medicine, who can provide, uh, updates and disseminate, uh, COVID-related information, um, especially when it comes to, uh, Mr., uh, Councilmember Hill's question regarding, uh, quarantine versus isolation. And really more importantly, can accurately update and provide, uh, Centers for Disease, Centers for Disease Control guidance on, on CDC, um, recommended screening, um, for, uh, confirmatory negatives. Um, with that being said, you know, it, throughout the past few meetings, I, I really appreciate council members actually stepping up and, and defending, um, citizens. I really want to thank, uh, Vice Mayor, um, uh, Smith Lee and, and Councilmember, uh, Hill, especially when it comes to the right, uh, for citizens to have a space and voice, as well as, uh, Councilwoman, Woman, uh, Wilson Smith. So I asked of this, uh, to stop taking, uh, offense to our blunt criticism. Um, you know, it is the job of council members to, to really roll with the good and the bad and the moods of the people. Uh, at least, you know, you have people who still care about this city and her democratic process, um, and know that there are young leaders ready and eager, uh, to get to work and serve. I, I do think when it comes to, um, council and the length of the meetings, it would be interesting to see the engagement of citizens. Um, and I'm, I'm talking about the creation of commissions and boards, uh, commission to locate and coordinate projects with a sister city, a, a gang prevention community task force, a housing affordability advisory committee, uh, Youth and Families Collaborative Commission, a Citizens Core Council, a Public Safety and Human Services Committee, a Climate, Energy and Environmental Policy Committee, and even a, a Green City Committee, or even a beautification committee. Engaging the public, which we're not necessarily seeing on council, can be a way that you can justify, faiably say that you have had citizen input on matters that you decide on. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up, Ms. Barbara Rudolph?
Oops, I think that unmute got a little confused there. I did unmute. Anyway, thank you. 1675 Mount Vernon Street, Barb Rudolph. Good afternoon, everyone. I honest, I honestly did not, um, I did not, um, consult with any of these, of the other citizens who spoke. Um, I appreciate their comments, but I have something similar to say to what, um, Mr. Ingram said about, um, the commentary at the last special meeting regarding, um, the public information period and a lot, having time for citizens to share. And there was some discussion about whether that should be held in only one meeting a month versus two. Um, I also thank, uh, Councilors Wilson Smith, um, Hill and Smith Lee for defending the, the right of citizens to speak and recognizing that, that the meetings are for citizens, at least to some extent. And I just wanted to note that, um, I think if you look back over at least the year of 2020, since you, the preponderance of meetings have been online, um, or virtual, that there really hasn't even been the amount of citizen commentary that you experienced when we, we met in the train station. I think partly because a lot of people are at work. Um, I would say out of the amount of time that's consumed in meetings, it's, um, a minor amount comes from citizen commentary. And I, I do think most of it is, is substantive, not just taking up time. So I appreciate those of you who agree with that. I appreciate your saying so. Thank you.
Uh, all right, any more hands in the chat? Garrett? I don't see any more.
Uh, Mr. Tally wanted to try again. Just trying to locate him.
Okay, I, I think I'm, I'm actually connected this time. Let me start again. Um, it's kind of a repeat of what Patrick mentioned. Um, did we and are we going to make a bid for the Wegmans Distribution Center? Um, they're getting pushed back from where they're trying to go now. And we here in Petersburg, the intersection of I-95, 85, 295 and US Highway 460, we are a perfect place for a distribution center. On the topic of economic development, which that, what that is, is that office working with other departments and commissions in the city? It seems to me that economic development is, is a combined effort of many different departments and commissions, not just that small little office of labeled economic development. Uh, the condition of our streets and our sidewalks, the results we're getting from our school system, um, building and collections, the water system, all that combines to make this a welcome or unwelcome place for businesses to relocate. But these silos of different departments, it isn't going to work. It hasn't been working. And finally, can the city please continuously clean up the interstate entrances and exit ramps? Exit 50, rock like a garbage pit. I mean, was coming here to look and then getting on, on or off the exits there, that's going to be turned off right away. It can't be that difficult to do. Thank you.
Garrett, any other hands?
I believe that's it, Mayor.
All righty, uh, next we move on to item 13, business reports from the mayor and members of city council. Um, we'll start off with Councilman Cuthbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to follow up on a comment about, uh, the Martin Luther King House on Harrison Street. Um, I believe it's 514 Harrison. And if that's what it is, uh, it is on the city's blight log now. I know I asked that the Martin Luther King House be put on the city's blight log. And I'll tell you what the city's blight log says. This is the January blight log for 514 Harrison. No response from the owner to a NOV, that is a notice of violation. And then it says, next step, civil citations will be issued in 14 days. And the next date is January 25 of 2021. That is, that's the follow-up date for staff. I really commend staff for the way they've got their, um, efforts organized so that they can keep track of, um, what they've done and their advance date, what they've accomplished and what they intend to, to do next. So, uh, I ask staff to double check and make sure that the Martin Luther King House on Harrison Street is on this blight log. As I say, I think it is. Um, but if it's not, I would ask staff to add it. Like everyone else said, we want to preserve our Petersburg history. And, uh, our Neighborhood Services Department is doing a fabulous job in working toward that end. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, next, we move on to Councilman Wilson Smith? You muted, Councilman Wilson Smith?
Yep, I'm sorry about that again. Uh, thank you for calling on me. I, I, I have nothing planned. I would like to, um, elaborate on, on what Mr. Cuthbert just said and on Ms. Merle's, um, um, statement. We're not doing enough to celebrate our African-American history. And I know that you've heard this from me several times before. I cannot say it enough. I know it's part of our strategic plan, so I'm glad to see it in there. But while we wait, our history just continues to crumble. The Martin Luther King House, the Victoria Adams House. Victoria Adams House is boarded up. It's a brick house. I've given you all a picture of it. The history is tremendous. Please look it up for yourselves, Victoria Adams. Uh, Judge Roger Gregory's house, which is still standing where he grew up on North Carolina Avenue. We could actually make a true African-American historical trail off of these three homes alone. We need to do something to establish within our city an African-American, um, board or historical board or something. Our history is worth preserving. And, and one last thing, um, I just had it and it just went away. So I'm sorry about that. If it comes back, I'll, I'll give it to you again. But that's, that's the, the biggest thing right now that I keep telling us we need to do something about. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, next, um, Councilman Hart? Councilman Hart there. If that will come back, let's go to, uh, Councilman Hill.
Yes, uh, hello, everyone. I pray that all is well. Um, I agree with my colleagues about ML King, uh, Day. Um, in, in years past, we've always had programs or something to that nature. I, I, I just think it's because of COVID that nothing was really done. But, uh, in this city, we have, we did have some things that was going on. Uh, I know Tabernacle Head there and your program that they have every year. Of course, it was virtual. Tabernacle Baptist, they had their, uh, Martin Luther King celebration. On yesterday, we had our celebration. And then the, uh, the Brothers of, uh, Petersburg Alumni, uh, Chapter of Capa Fasaf Fraternity Incorporated, my fraternity, we went to the, uh, Hope Center and we donated over 50, $5,600 in the truck, uh, perishable items, non-perishable items, uh, along with our Capa Leaguers. So that was a great day of service for us on yesterday. We went there and unloaded a truckload and we presented a check for over $5,600. So we were happy to do that. Well, so that's one of the things I wanted to, uh, mention. Another thing, I would like for staff, we either to reiterate or come up with a plan, uh, we can deal with our, uh, our homeless, uh, people. Uh, we do see a, a growing number, uh, in the area and just to check, see, because a lot of times, uh, in some cases, people have some. uh, in some cases, people have somewhere to go, but they just don't want to go there. And it may be something to that effect. Uh, I do know that, uh, some of the boarding houses and things of that nature, they actually live there, but they just walk the streets all day. So what you may see is homeless may not be homeless. Maybe, maybe they, they just don't want to go there. But I, I know we do have, uh, some homelessness, uh, in our, uh, city. So maybe we can come up with something. I know we don't have a shelter here for men at this time. So, uh, we, we have to do something. We just can't turn a blind eye to that. Uh, speaking of the, uh, the exit, uh, I like the, the fact that we're doing this, uh, this innovation of all the different signs in the area, talking about, uh, keeping Petersburg clean. Uh, I think it's working. Uh, on the exits, what's happening is you have a lot of individuals who are asking for money on the exits. And what happened is a lot of people, instead of giving them money, they will give them food. And they'll take that food and discard it right there on the exit. So that's the reason why a lot of our exits, like Crater Road, exit fifty-two, if you come off the exit, you'll see those exits are more, um, have more debris than that. I've gone through that and I've seen city workers clean it. And I come right past and probably around about lunchtime or something like that, and you'll see trash still there. So I say this at our last meeting, it, it takes all of us to do that. So if you, if you're riding by and I know you have a soft heart for someone, um, you know, you don't want to give them money, but you're giving them, you know, food, a lot of times that's what they do. They just throw it right where they are. I've seen it done. So we have to be mindful of that. And given the, uh, the climate of our nation at this time, I'd like to admonish everyone that, uh, we all know what happened, uh, two weeks ago on Wednesday at our nation's Capitol, that words do matter. We are public officials and, you know, we've been calling some everything on social media and platforms like that, but words do matter. Like, uh, President-elect Joe Biden said, he said that, uh, it can either, uh, motivate an individual or it can ignite a situation. So we have to be careful about what our words and comments are on social meter, social media and different platforms like that. And, you know, and what have you, because we want people to come to the city of Petersburg. But if we ourselves, the citizens and the employees and the residents are talking bad about whether it's city staff, whether it's, uh, uh, the residents or whether it's the city in general, I mean, we have the First Amendment right, but it doesn't give me the right to go in the building and yell fire and there's no fire. So with everything that's going on in the country, this right here had me thinking, I'd like the city, uh, attorney along with our HR director to get with, uh, to get together and see what policy and procedures we have with cyber billing. If it's anything that when we're hiring someone, that they're not doing that on their social media site? And if they're taking part in that right now? Uh, we have situations that's going on in our city that where individuals are being bullied, uh, for no fault of their own. And, uh, I, I, I don't want to, I can't do anything about the actual citizen out there. But if you work for the city of Petersburg, then that's our job to write policies and procedures. And we should have something in our handbook that deals with that. Um, it's a big thing. Even, uh, Monop, meet, uh, our First Lady in the White House. That's what, one of her things about cyber billing. So we have to be careful, uh, with that. Uh, so I'd like to see the city attorney along with the HR director get together and see what policies and procedures we have as relates, uh, to social media and our employees, uh, and what have you. And the last thing, very quickly, uh, I'd like to see us look at how we can get better insurance. We deal with this from time to time. And, uh, I think that's one of the, the things, uh, of recruitment or the losing individuals to the city of Petersburg to make sure that we can keep our, our employees, uh, here. Thank you, uh, members of council and Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you, um, Vice Mayor Smithley.
Okay, thank you. Hello again, and first I want to just continue to pray for our country in this trying time. I also want to congratulate Dr. Jewel Barnard, our own Jewel Evans. Jewel lived in Six Water and she grew up in Cool Spring. Her father, the late Mr. Evans, and her mother, Juanita Fells, they both taught for the city of Petersburg. And, um, they were just great teachers, an English teacher and, uh, I think he was a industrial arts teacher. And he, um, passed, um, by a drunk driver. He was riding his bicycle. So Jewel and her dad was very close. But Jewel, I want to say we are so proud of you, of your nomination as the Deputy Secretary of the United States Department of Agriculture. Go Team Jewel. So let's do it. On January the twenty-third, we're gonna have two folds. The city area-wide cleanup and also Ward Six cleanup. The area-wide cleanup will start coming off the Washington Street exit off of ninety-five at the old Neptune Building. And we were, we are going to collect trash and clean up all the way up to Market Street. That time, the start time will be nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. So Ward Six cleanup location will start at Washington and Dunlop Street. And we're gonna go all the way up to the, um, Petersburg Pepsi-Cola plant. That start time is gonna be at nine to eleven. And so the reason why I have the stagger, um, start time is because I want to be able to be at both areas when we begin to start. So anyone who's interested in volunteer, please come out. If you want to do the area-wide, that starts at nine-thirty. The cleanup for Ward Six will start at nine. Supplies will be provided such as gloves, trash bags, masks. Also, I'm gonna have water and snacks. Please come out and let's get it started. Let's go. Let's do this. That concludes my report.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, um, next, um, Councilman Hill.
Yeah, very quickly, uh, I just was informed the Recreation Department did a live stream on yesterday of, uh, the, uh, Martin Luther King Day service that was at, uh, Tabernacle Baptist Church. So the city of Petersburg did, uh, join efforts with Tabernacle Baptist. And they did have that via, uh, Facebook and live stream. So I just wanted to let you all know that the city of Petersburg did do something for ML King Day like we've done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, um, Councilman Myers.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, um, I apologize to everybody. I don't have my camera on because I'm out here at the job site, but I have been listening and so I appreciate the opportunity to speak, but I agree with everyone. Um, Black Lives Matter and we need to do more about our African-American history in Petersburg. But I think that everyone needs to look at and reach out to Wayne Crocker so we can talk about how we move forward with our new African-American museum that we are working towards at the old McKenna Library. So keep that in mind, um, and in your hearts. And, uh, I appreciate everyone. I'm sorry that I could not be there with you all today, but thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Um, next we have, um, is Councilman Hart. On? Alright, Councilman Hart is off. Alright, um, next we'll, um, move on to item fourteen, items removed from the consent agenda. There are no items. Item fifteen, unfinished business. Item fifteen A, city council, rules of council.
Mayor and council, uh,
This is a discussion that we had, yes.
Based on our last meeting, uh, what we have done is you have two drafts of it. One is with what we would call a red line. The other is a clean draft, uh, based on the feedback given during the meeting and subsequent feedback, uh, following the meeting, uh, staffs provide. I don't know if our city attorney has anything extra to add with this in the process for moving forward.
Nothing to add. I, I think that, uh, council discussed each of these items in the manager's PowerPoint. And so this is just a matter of presenting it to you in the, in the form that you would use it in. I believe she just, uh, cut and pasted it right out of her PowerPoint. So, um, I think council's already gone through the, the actual changes.
Okay. Alright, um, Councilman Cuthbert. Are you muted?
I'm sorry. I move that we adopt the, the, uh, rules of council as proposed by the city manager.
A second.
A second by Vice Mayor Smithley. Question, Councilwoman Wilson Smith. You muted? You muted, Councilwoman Wilson Smith? Can you unmute?
I'm gonna stop muting myself. We stated at the last meeting that we were going to come back and discuss the items that we weren't sure of, such as section one. And, um, within these new rules, there is a section where the citizens are only speaking at one of the meetings and not all of the meeting, all of the meetings. Um, and I thought that some of us, it was just reiterated, did not agree with that. But if we vote to do this, then we are agreeing with it. If we vote to make these changes within here, then we are agreeing with it. Also, the section on, um, coming out of closed session, I don't know which age, if you could scroll to that or I'll find the page.
Uh, page one eighty-five or page six.
Page six. Page one eighty-five or page six. When we're coming out of closed session and we state that the matters obtained in such motion shall, okay, you go a little fast for me there, buddy. The matters can
Hold on, go down, please, Garrett. Down, little bit more. Little bit more. Little bit more. Little bit more. Stop.
Okay. When we come out of closed session, um, and it, when we come out and we say only the actions that we said we were gonna talk about is what we've talked about. If my understanding is correct, we should say more than that. We should say not what we went in and talked about, but we should allude to whatever the subject matter is. And, and I'll say it like this. Um, we should, a statement of the purpose of the meeting, such as acquiring land for a park, without going into the discussion of what we did. Um, or, um, a reference code about the meeting. But we come out and we only say that we went in for the purposes we said we went into, but we're not identifying that purpose for the public. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, uh, what Councilwoman Wilson Smith is talking about is actually identified in the actual motion. In fact, at the very end of each motion, it not only states the purpose, uh, but also says the subject matter. So sometimes it sounds like the mayor's repeating himself. But, uh, sometimes those are too, too closely related. And that's why when you come out, uh, you actually say that only matters, uh, that are covered by the motion for which you went into closed session before were discussed because those are actually identified in each of your motions as required by state code.
Okay. I think we have to repeat it, but you're the expert, so. Okay. Alright, the, um, the section which talks about us having public comment period at one meeting and not at the other meeting, I do not agree with. We should be allowed to have public comment period at all of our meetings because again, this is a public's meeting and it doesn't belong to us. And, um, within this document, we've already taken public comment period out of one of these examples before we even voted on it. So those are, those are the issues that I have with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Myers.
Um, I have to agree with Councilwoman Wilson Smith, um, with respect to the public's, uh, speaking. Um, they should have every right to speak at every meeting that we have. Um, I have to agree with her.
And I do too, uh, Mayor.
Alright, you have other questions?
Yes, one more. I'm sorry. The, the part about business and reports from council members, we're only limited to talk about what's going on in our ward. Uh, that causes a division, in my opinion, because if we're council members for the city, we're voted on by our ward, but we're council members for the city. So we should be allowed to talk about other things, such as when I would sponsor the Citizens Academy. I would not be able to announce that as this is written because it's not a ward-specific event.
Look at the, look at the part in red right there, ward slash city. We changed that to say city.
Why don't you take our ward? But okay, I see, I see what you're saying.
Councilwoman Wilson Smith, if you have any other?
Uh, I probably do. I was, I was hoping they were gonna keep scrolling the, um, yep, thank you. Don't go fast, don't go so fast. Okay.
Yeah, but Councilwoman Wilson Smith, one sec. Mr. Mayor, can you scroll back to that, uh, sentence that, uh, that part in that paragraph that Councilwoman Smith was discussing about the limitations of what you can talk about in your, uh, that council members can discuss out of their ward? Can you go back, scroll back to that line? And where it says that, um, information provided during these reports shall be limited to events occurring in the respective member's ward. Then you got slash city and shall not include the proposal and presentation of any new action items by members of council. So can this entire thing be stricken? Sentence? Why is it necessary?
Can I speak to this to you, council member? So we added it because the original language that you had actually only limited you speaking to the ward. We added this so that you could present stuff for the city. Your original language is that's the stuff that's not highlighted. And our reports were initially supposed to have been limited to your ward. So we added this language in to cover the ward, uh, the citywide presentations, or if you have a citywide discussion at the last meeting. So that's why we added that because it did, your, your original language only allowed for, only technically allowed for council to present about their ward, but we recognized that council was presenting beyond the ward. So that's why we added ward slash city down here.
Uh, I think what might be confusing about this, it's just looking at it. Yeah, because the, the sentence above it isn't struck out. I think what she's saying is the sentence right before it is what you had. And she's proposing to replace that sentence with the highlighted sentence. So
Alright, I got you. That's my, that's what it is, Tony. It wasn't stricken. I got you. Okay. Alright.
Exactly. Clean that up.
Okay, sorry, Councilwoman Wilson Smith, I was trying to be on your side.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Keep striking, uh, on there, the whole sentence from the end on because that, those are repeated. Information, this, the top one, the first, that went all the way down to council should all be stricken. And that's where the new one should have started. I'm sorry, I missed that. I'm sorry, I missed that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Cuthbert, let me see if Councilwoman Wilson Smith is finished. What are your questions, or you have any more items?
I probably do, but I'm going through these papers. So can you go on to Mr. Cuthbert? And if I still have a question, I may come back to my...
All right. No problem, Councilman Cuthbert.
On that last sentence, in the paragraph we've been talking about, I thought we also, at our last meeting, had said we were not gonna put the limitation on about "shall not include the proposal and presentation of any new action items by members of council." At least, we talked about that. How did we resolve that?
You guys agreed on that one, councilmember, that if there is a proposal or presentation, we will add them on the agenda versus being part of your report out?
That's right.
If Councilmember Wilson Smith wanted to do the Citizen Academy, we would actually schedule that as an agenda item, so that your report out can be just a report out, so that you won't be rushed in time with the five minutes. I think it's now five minutes or three minutes, because I have five and three. I don't remember which limit it was on the original.
Right.
I understand.
I understand, and I do remember now. And if you... I do believe that, as Ms. Jackson just said, we agreed that we'd leave it at five. So that three kind of got left over and ought to be deleted.
We'll take care of that.
All right, Councilwoman Wilson Smith?
Yeah, I'm having a different question now. We... Someone's made a motion, and someone's seconded. But it appears that we all still have questions about a lot of this. Are we at a point where we are actually ready to vote on this if we're still questioning some of the items? And where is the part about us having the public talk? Public and talk at one meeting and not at the other one? As I go through these papers? Where is it? Because I really want that stricken. Actually, there is an example in here about the first meeting and the second meeting. And the example of the second meeting has no public comment period. I just can't remember the page it was on. That's what I'm...
Tell me what I think what you're talking about are workshops versus... Work sessions versus a business meeting. So what you have in here is that at a business meeting, you have a public comment form. And a work session is just all presentations. There are no action items, agenda items, public hearings, or anything happening in the work sessions.
Okay, that's what I'm not in agreement with. Even if it's a work session, the opinions of the public are important. The ideas of the public are important. They may hear something differently than the way that we see it. And they should have the opportunity to speak on it during the meetings. Okay, I'm right here, Section 1B, page 5, where we have order of work session. And I don't see a public comment period. That's what I'm talking about. How can we have it on one and not on the other one? Order of work sessions, special reports, and admin, community affairs? I can't agree with that. I'm sorry.
Okay. At this, Councilman Hill, you have another question?
Go ahead, what you gonna say at this time? You gonna say something?
I was just saying that at this time, we had a motion and a second on on the original motion to approve. Is there any more discussion on that?
Okay. This work section, work session, I think some of council is having a hot burn over the public not being able to speak. So if we just add that on there, somewhere up in there, I think that this particular subject right here will pass on this, on the agenda item. Because you've had one, two, three, you got the four council members that's not really in favor of that. So, you know, I think it'd be best that, you know, we do the work session, but we still have, maybe have public to speak on. And what have you.
Can I say something, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so what I think would probably be best is the template for a work session. Because normally, at any of our work sessions, there are no public comments. It's only discussion of city council members. It's never been public comments on anything at a work session. And that's been in the past. But I guess what probably would be a good idea is to have just this template to be used at any work session that city council has in the future. To use that template that they have listed in yellow. If, you know, since it's an issue with everybody, with the comments, and having just one meeting being a work session, and then the second meeting being an actual council meeting. I guess you can still go back to doing the two council meetings if you guys choose to do so. But it is a good idea to have this template that they have for a work session for all those work sessions that we do have.
Well, I mean, yeah, I think we can use that for a work session. But what we're trying to do, we're trying to get more work done in our regular, monthly work... Our regular... Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I said that you can just use this as a template, but still have the two regular council meetings. Just be something that...
Yeah, but not...
Only having one business meeting and one work session a month. Can I share my screen, Garrett, and show them what I think Mr. Hill is asking?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, hold on two seconds.
And I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into this, but I just wanted to comment that I guess my concept of a work session might differ from what we're talking about. We used to use work sessions to do everything except action items. So your first readings and things like that, you do them in your work session because council isn't taking formal action. And that's how we, in my former localities, would reduce the amount of time you would spend in your actual business meetings. You would actually do your first readings and things like that. Your scheduling of a public hearing, you just wouldn't vote on something except for in a business meeting. But I don't know if that's how the manager's contemplating this, or how we're defining that here. But that's what I always thought we did with work sessions.
Councilmember Mayor, what I think would make this feasible is if you look here under the edited, I think, is it showing up? At the end of your, all your presentations, have an opportunity at the end, number 16, for public comments, if you want, if you are, if it's definite you want to have public comments. The key is, you're gonna have a lot of reports, just like this meeting took some time. When you go through each of these reports, from the finance reports, capital projects, and all of the projects, what will ultimately end up happening is that it's gonna be a longer meeting. But at the end of it, I put in the word "public comments", if you want to have a public comments there.
Yeah. Councilwoman, Mr. Mayor, Mayor?
Councilman Hill?
Councilwoman, Treska Wilson Smith, would that work with you?
Oh, my whole name. Anyway, does this mean that if we have a finance and budget report that we receive, that the public cannot make comments on it? Or on the capital projects update, or on the utilities, or anything else within this?
No, they can't make comments on it because it got public comments. Oh, you see item number 16 right there?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. He's saying, you're saying you get public comments after all of this. I'm asking, can the public comment on the subject matters above number 16?
No, ma'am. And I don't believe that's ever been the case. I'll ask our city attorney to comment on that, because I'm not the legal expert on this.
I don't know, there's a legal issue. I guess it's just where you put it in the agenda. But I do think that we've had our public comments just before the public hearings. So there are certainly some matters on which the comments may not have been received on. Though in this locality, you take public comments on every resolution anyway, unlike in others. So it does, there's no legal requirement in terms of where you put that in the agenda. And if Councilwoman Wilson Smith and the rest of council would like to have those comments at the top, from a legal perspective, certainly, you could put it anywhere you want.
But I think what she's asking, councilmember, is whether or not they can speak after each item. In the past, when staff does reports, we do not have... For example, the city manager does his reports. There are no, we do special reports, there are no council, there's no community input. By putting it at the end, it at least allows them to hear all the reports and make their comments on any of the reports. But we don't, because there are no action items, resolutions, or ordinances, we don't normally have public. It's up to council, though. If you want to have, open it up to the public on every presentation, it's up to you.
Yeah, I think that would probably gut the whole idea, because it would make for very long meetings. I think you probably, you know, logistically, not legally, would want to put it up front or at the end, either one. But after every item, it would make for very long meetings.
But we always say, the mayor always says, that the public cannot comment on anything on the agenda. So they won't have the opportunity to comment on these things. Let's say we're on number nine, utilities. And you've got a lot of citizens who have issues with their water bill. So you're saying that they can't comment on that at that particular time? And even if they wait to get down to number 16, they still can't comment on it?
So I don't think the mayor says you can't comment on anything on the agenda. What he says is that you have an opportunity to comment at certain times. Like if there's a public hearing, then you have to wait until the public hearing on that item. If there's a resolution, you wait for the public comment for that item. That's the distinction. There's no legal requirement saying that you cannot comment on things on the agenda. In fact, the public should comment on things on the agenda. They just have to do it at the proper time.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hill?
Yeah. Also, they can comment on it, but that don't mean that we have to engage the comments. After they do the whole presentation, they're basically, they'll come up and say, well, you know, I agree with this, I don't agree with that. And we're taking notes like what we always do when they're coming up. And then when we get ready to vote on an issue, because this is just a work session, when we get ready to vote on an issue, we have that information based on what the public has said. So I'm in agreement to having it at item number 16 at the bottom. So, you know, so at the end, they make their comments on whatever. Because all these things are not gonna be presented every time, you know? It may be something that may take more time than others. But that way, we can just go ahead and get through it and then go from there. That's what I'm, that's the way I see it. So it's not that they can't comment on it, we just can't engage them on their comments or go back and forth with them on whatever it is they're commenting about. We just make notes on it, and then when we go vote on it for the next time around, then that's what we'll do the next week.
And can I say something, Mayor, just for clarity, just from what Councilwoman Wilson Smith stated? She is correct. The mayor does state during the normal council meeting, during the public information period, that you cannot speak on anything that is on the agenda. But I guess this will be different, because it's just public comments, it's not the public information period. So they still should be able to speak on all the items that are presented at that work session meeting.
Right, because during the public information period, it's open for any items that are not otherwise covered. But here in Petersburg, not only for ordinances where you have public hearings scheduled, but also for resolutions, you allow public comment. So that's the reason for a statement. It's not that he doesn't want comment on items on the agenda. It's that he doesn't want you to comment twice. You're gonna have a comment on it when the public comment period for that item comes, if it's a resolution, or the public hearing period comes if it's an ordinance. But there's no prohibition from speaking on items on the agenda, just has to be done when it's allowed.
Okay. All right, I agree with you.
All right. Well, we had a motion and a second on Councilwoman Cuthbert's motion.
Mayor, would it be... With the changes on the document, I took out the extra sentence and added the public comments under orders.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I make a substitute motion that we adopt the rules of council with the changes that had just been made.
Can I get you to say by resolution? Because it's a resolution, it's in a package.
I'm sorry. I move that we adopt the resolution with the changes that have been made.
All right, substitute motion by Councilman Hill?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Wilson Smith. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Cuthbert? Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers? He's muted.
He's off.
He's still on, but he's muted. Is he gone?
He's gone.
Okay. Councilmember Hart? Is he gone too?
Yes.
I think so, okay. Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smith Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Peron?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers? I think he unmuted himself. Can he hear me? Okay, he unmuted himself, but I guess he still can't hear me. Okay. Motion's passed.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to item 16A. Consideration to appropriate funding in the amount of $382,494.45 for the COVID-19 municipal utility relief program that was awarded to the city of Petersburg by the Virginia Department of Housing and Urban Development. Second reading.
Ms. India has a presentation on this item. Ms. Adams?
Thanks, city manager. Garrett, do you have the presentation pulled up?
If you have it, you can share it yourself, India, and run it.
Okay. All right, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Madam City Manager. My name's India Adams Jacobs, and I'm assistant to the city manager here. I just wanted to give you an update on the utility relief assistance program. As we mentioned, this is the second reading of that funding that we received from VHC D. So just a little bit of overview about the program guidelines from VHC D. We did receive these funds as part of the CARES Act. These funds are specifically allocated for utility customers who have been greatly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. It also includes customers who have fallen behind on water and wastewater bill payments due to COVID-19. This specific program is also allocated for water and wastewater bills that were between 30 and 60-plus days late, between that March 1st, 2020, and December 30th, 2020. And this program does not include funding for fees or penalties assessed by the locality. As part of this program, we had to work to further refine our program criteria that was set forth out of state. So eligibility requirements for Petersburg program include what was set up by the state, which was those who had faced financial hardship during the COVID-19 pandemic. You must have been a city of Petersburg resident with a residential utility account, had that pass due water or wastewater balance that began between March 1st, 2020, and December 30th, 2020, and some parameters that the state gave us as well, to look at funding as much as possible, but also setting a potential floor. So we looked at a minimum balance of $20 per account and a maximum balance of $1,500 pass due bill, as well as you having to accept the funding. What this program does not do, it does not cover any utility bills from other localities, such as the city of Richmond, we actually have people who have applied from other localities, or Dominion Power bills. This is only city-related water and wastewater. It does not also include refuse, which trash, stormwater, or taxes. Again, I talked about the timeline that this pass due bill had to be accrued during. I mean, it does not cover fees or penalties assessed by our locality. A little bit about the applications. This program actually launched a few weeks ago. A little bit about the applications, um, this program actually launched a few weeks ago. Our first application deadline was January eighth for online applications. Um, mailed, applications were mailed to residents, but we have been informed by a number of of folks that there were some issues getting those um, applications mailed to them due to some UPS delays. We've all heard about some of the UPS delays and issues that the postal services had, and that unfortunately did impact this process. So given that, we we know that those um, were some issues there, we adjusted the timeline to give more time for folks to get those applications. Mailed back to us or dropped off to us at our fiscal management building. Based on the applications we received thus far, we had about fourteen hundred, fourteen fifty to be specific as of last week. Eighty percent of the people who have applied, applied online via our online Microsoft forms application. Um, and then twenty percent of those people replied with paper applications. Um, looking at deadlines, we did extend that deadline for those hard copy applications to be sent back by January twenty ninth. Uh, please note that those who received um, communication that you would get a notice by the end of January, that we have thus extended that um, timeframe to get a notice back to you if you were granted an award throughout this process. Uh, you will receive that um, award no later than February twenty-sixth. Initially, the state gave us a deadline of January twenty-first, but because of CARES Act funding being extended overall. Uh, we actually have a reprieve, a little bit longer to get this um, program administered and and done. So we're actually extending that so that we can have time to make sure all residents are given the opportunity to be participants. So as part of the team who's looked at this committee um, to look at this program and our program options. Uh, we did mention that we've got about three hundred eighty-two thousand dollars to allocate. Uh, we did mention that we have about fourteen hundred applicants. Given that we were extending the deadline to the twenty ninth to get applications in, we've kind of mulled over options for uh, actually giving out this funding, allocating this funding equitably. Um, but we did say in our initial communication to folks that this program could be awarded on a first come, first some, first come, first served basis. Um, and in line with a submitted application that was both complete and accurate. Uh, again, we mentioned some people who have applied, um, who are not city residents, who do not have residential um, accounts. But we also have some people apply with wrong accounts and incorrect information. So we are going um, and looking at some of that um, as part of this process. But we wanted to bring to City Council today two policy options. Uh, option A would be to go forward with that option that we already um, established uh, in our communications. That first come, first served would be um, regardless of online application or paper application based on what we have. Um, by January twenty ninth, the pros of this approach is we can exhaust our funds quicker. Um, it's easier to administer. Uh, cons is um, this is a less equitable option. Fewer residents will receive funding uh, with option A. Taking a look at option B, which is actually what the committee would recommend to you all today, and I'll go a little bit at the end. Um, it's as to who part of the committee was, but this option gives um, still to be awarded on a first come, first served basis. Based on that completed application and accuracy. But when we thought a little bit more about equity, knowing that some of our residents do not have access to online applications or not. As computer literate, um, we wanted to look at ways that we could break down the funding. So that a portion based on the application status to date would be allocated towards those who have already responded online. Based on the predetermined deadline, but also give some um, way to give some equity towards those who have sent in paper applications. And who will still send in paper applications by January twenty ninth. So what we looked at was based on eighty percent of our applications would be setting aside about three hundred and six thousand dollars. And then based on the twenty percent of paper applications, setting aside about seventy-six thousand um, dollars for those paper applications to be spread on a tiered system as fairly and as equitably as possible. Um, with this tiered system, we would be looking at caps of no more of than two hundred and fifty dollars if your bill is from zero to five hundred. If your bill is from five hundred to a thousand, about five hundred dollars. And then if your bill is a thousand or more capped at seven fifty. So pros of this program of option B would be it's more equitable, it provides a funding breakdown for both online and paper applicants. Which will assist if they were having issues with applying online. Um, more residents would receive funding with this, it's definitely more equitable. Cons is for staff, it's more difficult to administer. It would take a little bit more time, but again, the state gave us some deadlines, so we had some time built in. Um, and another con with this is that residents may receive a lower amount towards their overall pass bill. So at this point, um, I'll come back to uh, questions as it relates to the council action needed on option A or B. But moving forward as our next steps, after you all give us a decision today, we would be looking at those internal review of applicants by the end of the twenty. Right after we receive our final paper applications by January twenty ninth. We would send those award letters to those eligible accounts. Um, and you can mail those award letters and both email based on the ways that they actually apply. And then we would give that report back to City Council. So again, I I was the one giving this presentation again, but uh, the Utility Staff Assistance Program Committee, the surprise of the city manager. Um, Mr. Reese Carroll Benavieje, Mr. Lionel Lyons, Mr. Nneda Tias, myself, Tangela Ennis. Um, as Utilities Director, Mr. Garrett Van Voorhees, RIT Director, Ms. Patrice Elliott, Finance Director. Monty Evans from Billing and Collections Manager, and Ms. Alicia Bean, our Management Fellow. So at this time, um, our team is ready to answer any questions that you may have and help you um, make a decision as to whether or not as a body you want to move forward with option A or option B.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Adams Jacobs. Next, we have a question from Councilwoman Wilson Smith.
Thank you. Um, the, the bill that the customers get are all under the umbrella of utility bill. It includes the trash, the sewer, the water, and stormwater drainage, correct? Correct? Yes, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're going to deduct trash. Is it just trash we're deducting from that?
Water and trash will not be included.
Steady, and I'm sorry.
Stormwater and trash, which is refuge, yes.
Okay. Why are we, um, why, why are we even including um, penalties and late fees? And and I thought we stopped that once COVID hit.
We, we have worn down, but you're right. Uh, we've been checking bills to see. Uh, we have no impression that there are, but I think COVID stopped cutoffs, but I don't believe it stopped charging people.
Okay, so if we're looking at their bills from March until now. If we said we were not going to have late fees and penalties for a certain time. Are we deducting that? Uh, be- because if we're not paying those late fees and fees and penalties. At what point does the customer know when the late fees and penalties came about?
There, there were no late fees or penalties assigned during that time period.
Okay, from March until now?
Correct.
Okay, so then if that's the case, then that doesn't need to be within this because there were no late fees or penalties. Now what we are agreeing to pay is the sewer and their water. And since the deadline has been extended, if a person who applied the first of, the first of the month now has a new water bill with a new uh, fee attached. Do they reapply it for the whole bill, or are you cutting it off at what they applied for?
Ye- yes, we would be looking at cutting it off based on what they applied for at the time, based on the time and the parameters. And to your first point about why we included that in the slide, um, that was um, uh, burbed straight from the state. Um, it specifically says that funds from this program cannot be used for fees or penalties, so that's why we wanted to include that.
Okay, but we're, we're not doing fees or penalties, right? You just said that because it's in there.
Correct.
Okay, um, if you send me a bill, if you put out advertisement that says we're going to help you with this, with your bill. And and the cutoff date is December the eighth. If I rush in and get this to you, but on December the tenth, I got a brand-new bill. Then do we not have access to see what that actual bill is? And can we make those adjustments?
So Councilwoman, we're not basing this on a bill that they sent us. We're basing it on what's in our system. And so our proposal is actually focusing on, so from our IT staff, they're giving us a run of who falls in this category and how much for each of the individuals in that category debate is available. What we're proposing, we're not looking at paying anyone's total bill unless it's really, really small. Uh, but paying a, based on the number of applicants we have and the amount of money we have available. I'm not sure if it was on the slide. What was the total amount, Garrett or either India, that we calculated when we submitted this proposal? Garrett, do you remember the amount?
The, the total amount that was passed due or the, the, the total amount that we were granted?
The amount that we submitted to them to get the amount we were granted.
Oh, my, um, I can look it up.
What was the big number? Let's just, so let me just say this, Councilmembers. Uh, we have more than three hundred eighty-two thousand dollars worth of people in this cata- category, cute picture, India. Uh, we literally had at least double to triple that amount, actually far, far more than that in this category. Of the thirty, sixty, ninety-day slot are going from March until December or either January. So what we're trying to figure out from an equity standpoint, because we do realize that we have thousands of individuals who fall in this category, that we wanted to be able to do something for everyone. But we realized that there will be no bills that are completely eliminated by this process, but only a portion of it.
Okay, and the, um, I thought I read that a certain percentage of the money that's been awarded that the city could, could have, um, I'll call it an administrative fee, is that correct?
That is an option, but we have not looked at that because right now we'd rather put it toward the people's bills versus ourselves.
And well, and once we vote on one of these options in that, that would make um, that impossible really. Because the options equal up to the total amount given.
That's, yeah, we're not recommending administrative fees right now. We'd rather see the money go toward supporting individuals in their water bill.
And I agree, I just wanted to be sure that we were aware of.
We had that option, and some cities are using that option, but we just have such a high knee, we didn't vote on that. We didn't as a group.
Thank you.
And that, that total number was just over one point one million.
All right, if you have other questions for members of council?
Yes, one question, Mr. Mayor, um, so.
All right, Councilman Hill.
We're not doing any more online applications. Everything is hard copy right now. Rather for this month, right?
Correct. Um, the online application was pulled. We worked with Ms. Kimmy um, and the team to have that um, pulled from the website. Because we did see a significant amount of, of folks who did choose to apply online, so we did pull that. The only reason we looked to extend the deadline for paper for those who applications were actually mailed to was because of those issues with the postal service.
So if someone wants to put in right now, um, how would they have to go down to the office and 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 get an application?
So there are no paper applications available, but we can make some, we can repost a hard copy if they believe that they meet the parameters. But as the city manager spoke to um, a little bit ago, um, we did pull and do a targeted mailing based off of people who who met these parameters. Um, with the pass due bills at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilman Cuthbert?
Mr. Mayor, are we at the point of um, making a motion and voting?
Ye- yes, we are.
I move that council approves the appropriation using option B.
I second it.
Right, second by Vice Mayor Smithley.
Option B.
All right. And at this time, Ms. Jackson?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers is off, and Hart, Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smithley?
Aye.
Mayor Per.
Councilmember Myers is here.
You're here, okay. Councilmember Myers? Thank you. Mayor Per.
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Next, item sixteen D, consideration of appropriation amount of eighty-four thousand one hundred and five dollars for the right-of-way acquisition service. For the South Crater Road Traffic Signal Improvement Project being conducted by Ms. Kimberly Horn.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is um, part of our traffic signal project. We're about ninety percent of the plans done, and we need to acquire six, six properties for right-of-way. This eighty-four thousand dollars is um, a hundred percent reimbursable to the city, and we just ask that you approve this appropriation.
All right, Councilman Hill?
So moved?
I second.
Second, Vice Mayor Smithley?
Yes.
All right, and we'll open the floor for comment on appropriation. The eighty-four thousand one hundred and five dollars for the right-of-way acquisition services fee. All right, seeing no hands, this public comment period is closed. Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smithley?
Aye.
Mayor Per.
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Next, item C, consideration of appropriation for a grant from the historic African-American cemetery in Graves Grange in the amount of one thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars, second reading. Ms. Taylor?
Mayor, council, this is just a grant uh, in which we applied for to support the People's Cemetery. And so it's a small amount uh, grant, but it will assist with the maintenance and upkeep of the African-American cemetery, which we call the People's Cemetery.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm in order, I move that we approve.
Yeah, Councilman Hill?
I move that we approve the grant.
Second.
Second, Councilman Myers?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll open the floor for any public comment on the appropriation of the eighteen hundred sixty-five dollars for People's Cemetery. All right, seeing no hands, this public comment period is closed. Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smithley?
Aye.
Mayor Per.
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Next, item sixteen D, consideration of appropriation for a granted amount of eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars for the expansion funding for the Comprehensive Community Corrections Act and Presat Trial Services Act, second reading. Um, this is from Ms. Levy.
Mayor, council, this is just an amendment uh, funding uh, for a, a grant for them. And so we are doing the adjustment as we often do throughout the fiscal year.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the grant.
Thank you. Councilman Hill? All right, motion of Councilman Hill?
Second.
All right, second for Councilman Myers.
Um, yes, sir.
We'll open up the floor for public comment on the eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars for the expansion funding for Comprehensive Community Corrections Act of Free Trial Services. All right, seeing no hands, this public comment period is closed. Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smithley?
Aye.
Mayor Per?
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Next, item sixteen E, consideration of the carrying forward of the FY twenty nineteen twenty, amount of three hundred and seven one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the CDBG.
C V one CARES Act to be approved for FY twenty twenty-one for the coronavirus pandemic due to the city of Petersburg.
Once again, mayor, this is uh the funding was approved last fiscal year uh, and what we are voting on to discussing today is to carry this funding forward into the new fiscal year.
Okay.
And this is CDB CARES funding specific, not for the other grant in which we asked for an update on. We were awarded funding just for CARES-type activities in which council voted on to include some of our marketing as well as our contact tracing and those items that were carried through this uh pool of money.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we-
Vice Mayor-
So move.
Okay, Vice Mayor-
So move.
Yes. All right, Councilman Hill? All right, we'll open the floor for any public comment on the three hundred and seven one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the CDBG CARES Act. Um we have one hand up, Ms. Barb Rudolph, could you unmute her?
Thank you, Mayor Per. Barb Rudolph, sixteen seventy-five Mount Vernon Street. Um I think in the interest of transparency, um should perhaps talk about um at back when this was passed in June and then was um discussed a few times subsequently. I believe that um this was was told at least to the council and to the public that it was being used for the first round of the um small business assistance loans for um you know for for COVID. And apparently um maybe subsequently some of those expenses were moved to um the CRF, the other the other kind of CARES Act funding, but that hasn't been explained, and I think if you go back in your minutes, you'll find that most of this money um it was, there were reports shown that it was being spent for small business assistance. Thank you.
And mayor, uh Ms. Rudolph is correct. Uh we did utilize, after we received the COVID CARES funding, we utilized the bulk with the CARES and only a small proportion of the CDBG, but it still has the usage for this fiscal year to be used for other sources to include small business support in addition. Ms. Tyus can talk a little bit more as she's been the project manager on these fundings.
Um a good afternoon to you and council. Uh as as we, as the manager explained and as Ms. uh Rudolph referenced, um we we used the CARES Act funding for things that were appropriate uh with which reserved these CDBG funds because they had a different timestamp on them. Uh the a part, a major part of what you originally approved this for was uh it had three, three parts to it, contact tracers, uh uh small business assistance, as well as a recent one. Uh uh a part of this this funding, uh we hired five contact tracers for the hu- the health department, and a part of this, a significant amount of this funding was was served to support those contact tracers till the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tyus. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
I had a question.
Councilwoman Wilson Smith?
Can we, please, by our second meeting in February, have a document which shows each grant that we have obtained, what each grant actually paid for, and any amounts that were left over from each grant, and when it's due back to the, what whatever is left is due back to the government? Could we do that?
We'll have this part of the financial presentation per a new agenda, and also, I believe, I don't know if we said this, but the date that we knew was going to be extended has now officially been extended uh for not only for the CARES funding, but everything to the end of this fiscal year, so uh oddly enough, there's nothing due back right now, but we will get you an update at the next meeting on where we are on CARES funding.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions, we have a motion in se- in a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Epstein.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smith Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Per?
Aye.
Motion's passed.
All right, next is item sixteen F, consideration of a nomination to the Crater Regional Workforce Development Board. And I know everyone has a copy of Ms. Amanda Habanski from People's Advantage Federal Credit Union. Now entertain a motion to approve it to the workforce board.
So move.
Second.
All right, Councilman Myers, second. From Councilman Hill, Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Councilmember Cuthbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smith Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Per?
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Next move on item seventeen, city manager's agenda. Ms. Benavides, any other items? Okay, I think she stepped away. Item eighteen, business reports from the clerk, Ms. Jackson, any items?
I have no items.
Okay, Ms. Benavides, you're back. Any items?
Uh no, sir, no items. Uh just a note to everyone, the city of Petersburg will be open tomorrow. I know a lot of jurisdictions are closing down, but uh staff will be on site. The buildings are still not open to the public, but we are not shutting City Hall down tomorrow.
Thank you. Um next, uh item nineteen, business reports from the city attorney, Mr. Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um you may recall several months ago, uh council adopted a resolution indicating a supportive uh staff or- That's not coming.
He's not happy.
Somebody's hungry.
Dog. That's not me.
So um you you may recall, uh several months ago, council adopted a uh resolution supporting uh staff in their efforts to address the conditions on the uh Old Ramada Building. Uh since that time, uh building code official and uh his staff have uh conducted a preliminary uh inspection of the property from the uh public areas outside of the property. Uh they also retained a consulting firm uh to help them in these efforts. Uh it culminated a a short while ago with uh uh in Inspector Shuck sending a notice to Mr. Harrison, uh which would be the first step if the city were to seek an administrative inspection warrant requesting his uh voluntary authorization for us to enter on the property to try to determine if there are any unsafe conditions uh upon that property. Uh Mr. Harrison uh did cooperate with that request and did authorize the city to enter upon the property for that purpose, uh which uh was uh done today. Um and today we uh I met in my office at about uh eight thirty this morning. Uh me, uh the code and code inspection staff, as well as uh the engineering consultants from Mosley. Uh we met at the scene and we met with the uh police department who did uh go through the building and clear the building uh for our entry into the building. Uh we were accompanied also by uh the legal representative for Mr. Harrison, as well as uh an engineering consultant that he had hired. Uh and I wanted to give you the update, uh if my screen is sharing, you know, how the police entering and and making sure that it's uh uh safe in terms of uh no one else being in the building that could interfere with the uh inspection. And this is just about a a two-minute clip, just to give you guys an idea of uh what was done this morning, what was found. A a pretty good team effort uh for the city of Petersburg, uh working together with the the departments uh as well as the owner of the property to try to assess its condition. And then once the officers made entry into the building, uh we stood on the outside of the building assessing the exterior. They were in there for probably about thirty to forty-five minutes um going floor to floor uh on the property. And as you know, the you know, the property is is riddled with graffiti and and other uh issues with the exterior. This is probably the first shot that that many have had of uh examining the interior, which likewise uh had graffiti and other issues. A lot of us wore respiratory gear to make sure for the uh air quality was safe. Um we have an open elevator shaft and some some other issues that we found. We we expect to get a preliminary report back uh from the uh consultants that we've hired. Uh once we have that in hand, I've spoken with uh the attorney for Mr. Harrison, and uh we hope to meet with uh his client and and the city manager and I uh via Zoom in the coming weeks to discuss the path forward. Um I'll, we will keep you updated um as as this progresses. That's that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. Any questions for Mr. Williams? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Seeing no, yes, Councilman Cuthbert?
Uh Mr. Williams, what is the timetable for getting those reports that you referenced, and what is the timetable for the meeting with Mr. Harrison's team?
Uh again, our our consultants understand the uh the the fact that the city uh wants to ensure the safety of the building, so they they're expediting to get it done, but it's also a major project that we uh hope to make sure we do everything right. So in in terms of giving you a timeline, I I don't think I can get that right now. But uh I I do believe that that we'll have it in the very near future, and as soon as we get it, we'll provide that to you.
Well, would you give us an update, please, at our uh first meeting in, whoops? Well, have we adopted our rules of council yet, our amended rules?
Yes.
Yes. So we're gonna need to wait for a report for, well, you can give us a report at our work session, can't you?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, would you do that, please?
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from from Mr. Williams? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item twenty, adjournment.
So move.
All right.
God have blessed you.
Right. Have a good one.